He is feeling much better and he is hoping to rejoin us at a council meeting as soon as possible. He will not be participating remotely this evening, but he's already talking about he wants to be here next week. We'll see. But we wish him a speedy recovery and we're glad that he's home. The first item this evening is a presentation from the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority. And folks are here, and if you want to come up. And I know we have Neil Teague and Melanie Isis here.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, and Deputy City Manager Ludlow. I'm Melanie Isis. I'm the Executive Director of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority, which is a business association created by the city in 1987 to manage the Tacoma Langley Commercial Management District. Our district has 13 commercial properties and 152 memories. With me is Neil Teague, President of the CDA Board of Directors and an owner of the Crossroads Professional Building. Neil and I appreciate the opportunity to address and update you on the CDA, which is what we call the Crossroads Development Authority, its past accomplishments and future plans as you consider our request for reauthorization. Nothing stays the same forever, and that is the case in the Tacoma Langley Crossroads. The long-awaited Tacoma Langley Transit Center is now under construction by the Maryland Transit Administration to be completed in 2015. The MTA is moving forward with property acquisition for the Purple Line, which received a record of decision from the U.S. Department of Transportation in March. Groundbreaking is expected in 2015 with completion in 2020. The midpoint in the 16-mile light rail is the Tacoma Langley Crossroads. And sector plans were developed by both counties for mixed-use transit-oriented redevelopment, concentrating higher density around transit. I'm now going to turn it over to Neil to give you a little background on the organization up to 2012, and then I'll return.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. How are you this evening? I won't go into excruciating detail over the past 25 years of the CDA's history. Suffice to say that it started out as a volunteer organization, as typical business association, and worked very hard to make improvements in the 80s in an era of kind of generational and major generational and demographic changes to the crossroads. It was clear, it became clear after a while that without a dedicated source of funding, the kinds of things that we wanted to accomplish just simply couldn't be accomplished. And thankfully, the city stepped in with the new ordinance, the ordinance that we're now here to talk about reauthorizing, to allow us to actually impose members' dues upon our own property owners and members to provide a source of funding to support our activities. And with that source of funding, over the past 25 years, we have responded to the mission and needs of the members of the association, both needs and opportunities that came along, primarily in marketing, security, and infrastructure, public infrastructure. And those of you who worked with us during that time know well those things. I won't go into detail now, but suffice to say that we feel we've accomplished our mission and then some over this period of time. But as Melanie said, there's always new challenges. Two years ago, when our authorization was expiring, we faced a couple of challenges. One, the coming of the Purple Line was uncertain. We were unsure what the needs and mission of the organization might be in a new development area. And two, our longtime founder and Executive Director, Erwin Mack, who'd been the central focus of the organization for the entire time of its existence, was retiring. So instead of asking for lengthy reauthorization, we asked the council just for a two-year reauthorization, recognizing that because we're taxing our members or imposing fees on our members, we want to make sure we're responsible and that we really need it. So we asked for two years to give us a couple of time to see if we could make that transition, which is a critical one in many organizations, from that kind of legacy organization to one that has an ongoing structure. I'm here today to say that we're very pleased that we've done so, I believe, very well. Melanie Isis will talk a little bit about some of the things we're planning on and would like to do in the future if we're reauthorized. And also, the Purple Line, which at the time was somewhat uncertain, although many people were confident, appears now to be very much coming along and will be a reality in our area. For that reason, we're talking about a reauthorization of at least six years, which gives us time to focus for another, perhaps, hinge point in our area when the Purple Line comes and we start to see the change that is promised really become a reality. With that, I will turn it over to Melanie, and she can talk a little more about what we plan to do.
I joined the CDA in 2012 after the retirement of Erwin Mack. I was hired by the board to reinvigorate the organization and return the focus to marketing and promotion, maintenance, amenities, and security. As one of my first board meetings in early 2012, we discussed creating a new logo for the organization to refresh its image after 25 years, along with the new website, both of which the board approved and which I developed in mid-2012. I also created a new member brochure emphasizing the benefits, a new business directory that we distributed in bulk to members. I organized technical assistance workshops for the members, quarterly mixers, and launched a weekly e-newsletter. Each of you were given these brochures, so if you look at the member brochure, you'll get a sense of the direction I was going in. Other topics that I explored in 2012 were workforce training, establishing an outdoor market, and creating a partnership with the University of Maryland Smith School of Business so that MBA students could work with CDA businesses for a semester or two and help them improve their operations. I learned that CDA members were not interested in technical assistance workshops or attending mixers, nor was the Smith School interested in partnering with us to assist mom-and-pop businesses. In 2012, Prince George's County launched Transforming Neighborhoods Initiative and chose Langley Park as one of six communities for improvements. The CDA participated from the beginning in the monthly meetings, and we support their efforts to improve Langley Park. They're working in everything from schools to family support services to safety, youth opportunities, et cetera. Our commercial centers are intertwined. As Langley Park goes, so goes the Tacoma Langley Crossroads. We promote their events in our newsletter, and we've procured donations for some of their events, such as their Teen Summer in 2013. Two weeks ago, I spoke at the ribbon cutting for their new multi-service center at La Union Hall, La Union Mall. In 2013, I expanded my toolbox for promoting the CDA and its members. In January, we adopted a one-mile stretch of New Hampshire Avenue under the state's Adopt a Highway program, in keeping with our maintenance mission. Sponsorship was a way to get our name in front of the community because we get two signs post-recognizing our adoption. And in exchange, we held four roadside cleanups, which we organized with the help of volunteers from the neighborhoods along New Hampshire. In 2014, we recruited churches in that one-mile section, and we had several members from Our Lady of Sorrows help us at our March 29 cleanup. In March last year, we launched a seasonal banner program so that we could replace our old banners with the old logo. Our budget wouldn't cover new banners, so we created a sponsored banner program where businesses would get their names imprinted and pay for the cost of the banner. Our board approved the design, and I sold banner sponsorships to 21 members. Our spring banners went up last March. Our summer banners followed in July, and we added seven poles, and then we did winter banners in November. Businesses paid once, and they got their banners hung for multiple years. The banner brought in about $13,000 in revenue, which covered most of the cost of manufacturing and installation. Last July, the beginning of our fiscal year 2014, I increased our marketing budget to promote members at area festivals. Last September, we participated in the Prince George's Hispanic Festival in Adelphi, and last October at the Tacoma Park Street Festival. We gathered materials from 36 of our members, which we displayed, and we gave out Shop the Crossroads tote bags. Just yesterday, I was at your Celebrate Tacoma Festival, giving out coupons and shopping packs. Last August, the CDA began running a monthly ad in the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Gazette, which has about 20,000 household distribution. The Gazette was our first step in regularly promoting our members in the media. Members can now see that we're promoting their businesses. The board discussed other venues, including bus shelters and El Tiempo Latino, which we'd like to do, but we don't, we can't afford it. We also explored whether a bid, a business improvement district, would be a useful model for the CDA to evolve into, and we contacted the University of Maryland to see if there was interest in researching the tax issues of a by-county bid. Our ex-eficio board member, Councilman Schultz, suggested that we expand our district west on University Boulevard to Carroll Avenue so that all the commercially-zoned properties in the crossroad sector plan would be in the CDA. We sent letters to all of the property owners, and we followed up and stopped by most of the businesses. Councilmember Schultz and I met with Horning Brothers to discuss expansion to their Mary Mack Square property, which is at the University and Carroll Avenue where the 7-Eleven and gas station. And they were open, but they were concerned about the impact of license fees on their tenants. We wrote letters of support and provided assistance to Prince George's County planners working on a community legacy application for improved pedestrian circulation, which was recently approved. We offered in-kind assistance organizing a sponsored banner program for Langley Park so that all four corners of the crossroads would be included as originally envisioned. We serve on two advisory committees, the Enterprise Development Group's Advisory Committee for Micro Loans and Washington at Venice University's Anactis Business Advisory Board. It's something that their business program is involved in. It's a national program. During the past year, we strengthened our ties to the University of Maryland. We were invited last August to participate in a panel discussion on Langley Park that Councilmember Schultz also was on. And this professor, Amin, is studying immigrant participation in Wheaton, Silver Spring, and Langley Park, and she just presented her research at the Makeover Montgomery Conference about a week ago, and her session will be available online eventually. We also participate in meetings with the MTA for the Transit Center and the New Langley Park Small Business Owners Association, which sprang up last fall to defend the rights of small business owners who fear displacement from the Purple Line and the Transit Center. Last October, we began planning for the reauthorization. We wanted to expand our marketing and promotion in FY15, and we presented a menu of marketing tools to our board with the cost and the coverage, such as newspaper ads and bus shelters. The prices made clear that the CDA would need a lot more revenue than was currently available to promote our members. So reauthorization was not only an opportunity to update our 1987 bylaws, but an opportunity to update our license fees. Our license fees had not increased since the organization was founded in 1987, despite five reauthorizations. Our last reauthorization in 2011, the city added a consumer price index fee, which had a small effect, but not much of a difference. During that same time period, '87 to 2014, inflation increased nearly 100% on everything, including rent and energy and housing. So a dollar's worth of goods in 1987 cost $1.92 in 2013. Our 1987 budget of $83,000 would take $153,000 in FY14 for the same programs. So unless license fees increased significantly, the CDA's ability to undertake marketing and promotion, amenities, maintenance, and security would be severely restricted. So during last October and November, our board reviewed our bylaws. They looked at our structure, and they went over our mission to promote and market the Crossroads Commercial Management District and to provide maintenance and security and amenities. Was it still relevant? They considered what was important, and they filled out a questionnaire that I developed. I also sent a similar survey to our members via Survey Monkey, and I also administered it in person. I got a total of 49 responses from these two queries. Number-one priority for both board and members was marketing and promotion, expanded in English and Spanish to improve public awareness of us, the CDA, and the businesses. Contracting a part-time maintenance worker, contracting a private security service or part-time officer to patrol the area, there was a perception that security was an issue, and adding things to make the area more attractive, like planters. In January, we hired a marketing firm, Cadence Marketing, to develop a media plan, and they presented their analysis and plan to us at the March meeting. The goals are to increase shopping traffic and promote CDA businesses and to build awareness of the CDA and households within a three-mile radius, including Tacoma Park and downtown Silver Spring. Cadence suggested a variety of tools. They created several messages for promoting the CDA to different audience, such as shopping that speaks your language and go beyond the familiar, find a new favorite. So in March, we incorporated one of these lines in our monthly Gazette ad, and we just did our very first-ever direct mailing at the beginning of May for Mother's Day with our logo and 21 coupons. You each have a copy. And it's somewhat of a victory because when I first started in 2012, what I really wanted to do was something like a coupon mailing, but it took a couple of years to get there. I distributed these mailers to every one of my members, telling them that we'll be doing more direct mail. It shows the residents of the area that we're a competitive commercial area, like others nearby. For the past two years, I've written a short e-newsletter every Friday, including all of the CDA members with email, which is about 99% of them. We're now averaging between 24% to 33% reading, which is great progress from where we begin. I'd like to get the percentage up to 50%. Next month, I'll be mailing the annual license invoices, and I'm going to be including a new annual report to members. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry for the croaky voice. A new annual report to members so they can see how their license fees have been spent because, after all, license fees are what funds the CDA, and the direction that we're going is to be providing services to our members. Planning for reauthorization is planning for the future. In April, our members approved the first license increase in 27 years with multiple bylaw revisions that our board had already passed. The increases are 33% a year for three years, with caps rising in years two and three and then eliminated in year three. And then in FY17, we're going to have an annual CPI increase, so we will never again have to have our bylaws revised to have a license fee increase. Other recent activities with promise for the future, including recently installed last week, six large commercial planters down at the crossroads with plantings around the city's benches. I hope you'll all drive by and take a look. They're very attractive. This was through a grant that we got a year ago from the city, a matching grant, to create our first amenities in the area. I've also met with the Hispanic Chamber and introduced them to my businesses. Docs in Progress is doing a documentary on one of our businesses, thanks to Reamberto Rodriguez at Silver Spring. I was involved in a discussion about your draft environmental legislation for small business procurement of environmentally friendly, and I also was involved in a meeting with the OTBA and the Washington Area Community Investment about local lending. So I'm just going to close by saying that we're requesting six more years of authorization. Six years will take us to 2020, when the Transit Center will be done and the Purple Line will be gone. Both of those projects have the potential to alter the development scenario in the crossroads. And by increasing our license fees over the next three years, we will be gradually able to expand our programs and our services, putting us in a much stronger position to face future challenges in 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds like you've been up to a lot. Do you have anything else that you want to present at this point?
No, I don't. We have a budget, which I gave to Sarah. We have a draft budget for FY15.
And if I can clarify one thing that I think you said, that the budget change, the dues changes have been approved by both the board and the members?
Yes, that's our process. Members have the final say in April.
Yes, yeah, we would not bring it up for you without that.
Okay, good. I think we have a couple of minutes for a couple of questions. I will point out that we're going to discuss this as a work session item this evening, so, you know, we don't have to cover a lot now, but if there's a couple of clarifications or anything anybody wants to find out right now, we have time for that. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. What would be the difference between what the organization is doing now and if you guys become a bid?
If we became a bid?
Yes. What would be your different offerings?
Well, one thing is that bids are funded through assessments on the, through percent of the assessment. And right now, the way we're funded is based on square feet of developed property. So as the property values rise, the bid has more money.
Right.
In our case, the property values rise, the square footage doesn't change. Well, it will eventually change. When the area makes use development, it will change.
What services would you offer that would be different?
Well, kind of, that's kind of where I'm going. I mean, maintenance, security, and amenities. I mean, ideally, we would do some events, but we'd have, you know, we'd have somebody kind of keeping the area sign-free, you know, power washing the bus stops, troubleshooting, public safety problems.
But if I could interject, I think the source of funding wouldn't change necessarily what we do. And it wasn't clear that a bid would necessarily get us more money because we have a very, very small, you know, geographic area here. So we ended up concluding, particularly without some support from the University of Maryland or some other source that we didn't have to pay for, that there was a whole lot of brain damage to figure it out without really getting us where we wanted to go. I think the, where it might have been interesting is if we could have used it as a vehicle to cross the county line again. We always wanted to be a by-county organization, but for reasons of history, which I don't need to go into, Prince George's County declined to participate at the time. I think there's interest in Prince George's County, but it's just, it's, obviously, it starts to get very complicated very quickly. So we felt we have a good financing source here, our members support it, they're willing to pay their fair share. Why go there unless we really get into something which will enable us to do something we can't do otherwise?
What are the, what's the current vacancy rate for retail?
It's very low.
You don't know?
It's like, you know, six percent or less.
Very, very low, I think, yeah, five or six. There's only one center, and that was in a transition of ownership that had any significant vacancy, and they've actually, I think, reduced their vacancy quite a bit in the last couple of months since the sale took place.
Yeah, it's very low.
Okay, great. Urban Land Institute did a presentation last week. Do you guys have any comment on it?
I didn't see it, so you saw it.
I was here. I think you heard that I have tried some of these things. In fact, for the last three weeks, I've been trying to find a place for someone who has been running a flea market in Long Branch, who has liability insurance, a porta potty, and he manages the trash, and none of our property owners are willing to have such an event in their large parking lots. So we try, it's not over. I mean, things are going to keep changing. So, you know, there are other universities with business schools. I did pursue that. I kind of took the first cut. TNI is interested, the Transforming Neighborhoods, they're interested in workforce training. I mean, one of the issues we deal with at the crossroads is the other side, and there's a huge amount of human capital that is not very well-educated and mostly could use job training and better jobs. And if they had better training and jobs, they'd have more money, they'd spend more money, and then the businesses would have a better mix of goods and services. So it's kind of like, you know, that would be a big help.
I guess, I guess, what I understand in the ULI is there were a number of good suggestions, but there wasn't a whole lot of things for us that we hadn't already kind of been exploring, is, I guess, the takeaway there.
And then with the Purple Line, you know, the area's going to change.
Yes.
Right.
We don't know how, really.
Right. But it, but there is going to be change. Some are concerned about housing.
Yes.
Specifically, affordable housing. I suspect there's going to be a proposal at the county level to mimic Tacoma Park's housing program. Do you guys think about affordable housing? Are you looking at how that's going to impact the area? Would you make changes to it? Have you talked to Prince George's County?
Yeah, my answer, we were deeply involved in the sector plan, as both as an organization and our respective members were. But we do not currently have any residences by definition within our area or our membership. So we're not specifically a housing organization, we're a business organization.
Right.
How that would play out, what our role might be if housing came into our area, is one of the reasons why we think, you know, six years is a good number, because, again, our structure would have to change if we had a bunch of residents who were essentially members or within our membership organization. But beyond that, in terms of working with city, county, supporting affordable housing, you know, those are our customers. We don't have any concerns there. We'd love to see it happen, but at the same time, it's not necessarily our brief in terms of what Melanie's charged to do with every day.
Right, right, right. But I just wanted to see if you guys had an opinion.
I'm very aware of the issue, and, I mean, it's popping up all over the place. Cost is really involved. There's the Purple Line Compact. Zoraida Marrero-Smith's coming to our board meeting to go over it. We're part of the Purple Line Coalition. I just was at the Makeover Montgomery on a, went to affordable housing session, and there's a lot of ideas out there. Prince George's County is developing a housing policy. They don't have it in place yet. There's a lot of, I don't know that it's going to just go full steam ahead. I think that there's a lot up in the air right now, as more and more players get involved in the issue, including the Center for Smart Growth. And we actually wrote a letter supporting their Tiger Planning Grant that's going to look at transportation, affordable housing. But, I mean, Langley Park could use a mix of housing, and by redeveloping it, they could keep a lot of affordable units and add in other levels of housing, help the whole area.
I would add, the sector plan that we were involved in contemplated less redevelopment of existing housing and more development of new housing in a mixed-use format. So I think, this is speaking personally, not necessarily the sentiment of the board, I think some of the concerns are a little overblown because I see more new development possibilities in a mixed-use format than I do see necessarily redevelopment of existing housing.
I think you're really talking more about the Langley Park side because that's where the 4,000 multi, you know, family garden apartments are concentrated. In our side, there's Lochne Avenue, but mostly it's single-family.
And then finally, you know, with retailers possibly having to close because of the redevelopment of the Purple Line, what are your guys' ideas? You know, the county's using this program called MOVE to lower the vacancy rate for office users. Have you talked to anyone at the executive's office to, you know, pay?
I haven't heard of MOVE. We are on this new Purple Line Implementation Advisory Committee that the County, Montgomery County Executive formed. We're having our second meeting on Wednesday, and also, MTA has created some programs, EEP, Economic Empowerment. They're planning on doing loans to small businesses that are impacted for the, during the construction. Of course, the businesses would have to be eligible to apply for the loans, and that's an issue, that many of the businesses may not be, may not have the financial stability to be eligible. But I think that there are still a lot of things being discussed for assisting the businesses.
Yeah, I think clearly one of our challenges is the Purple Line really comes into focus is going to be surviving the construction of it. But you can't kind of approach it until you get a sense of how it's going to work. We don't have a high office vacancy rate in this area either. I have heard of MOVE, but we would certainly, I think, if transportation gets impacted by construction, it'll affect all the businesses, whether they're retail or otherwise. So it's something we'll certainly be looking at closely.
And our members have been kept informed about the Purple Line. I've been out with their outreach person, Carlos Sabina-Dear. He's called on every business on the corridor. So, and I've had it in the newsletter, MTA's anxious to come and talk, but nobody's really paying attention. paying attention. They're just not paying attention.
Not yet.
Not yet, yeah.
They will once there starts to be an impact.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think we'll kind of break this discussion here with Councilmember Grimes when we resume it in the work session.
You'll be sticking around for the work session?
Yeah, we can, yeah.
And we will go to the preliminary part of the meeting and run through the preliminaries and the couple of voting items, and then we'll get back to this in the work session. First off, there are no changes to this evening's agenda, and just a couple of items on upcoming agendas. Reminder that a week from tonight, Monday, May 26th, the city will be closed for Memorial Day holiday. So, we'll have our council meeting on Tuesday, May 27th, and there will be a public hearing on what we're talking about, what we have just had the presentation on, and what we'll be talking about later this evening on the CDA boundaries and the ordinance amending the code for the reauthorization and continuation of the—to come aligning the Crossroads CDA. We'll also have, among other things, a work session discussion of revisions to the Police Department over hire policy. The following Monday, June 2nd, we have a public hearing on the dog park issue and work session items, including planning for the Carroll Avenue Bridge closure and identification of preventive traffic measures. And we will be talking with the Committee on the Environment about various ordinance changes and update on the Sustainable Maryland Certified Program. The following Monday, there will not be a council meeting, because that week, the council will be attending the Maryland Municipal League Conference in Ocean City. So, that's just a couple of upcoming items. We will now move to public comments on items on this evening's agenda, and that's on voting items, and we'll take them in order. So, if there's anybody here to provide any comments on Agenda Item Number Two, which is a second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2015 tax rate. Anybody here to comment on that? Seeing none, is there anybody here to comment on Agenda Item Number Three? And that's the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 15 Stormwater Management Budget. Seeing none, I'll move to the next item. That's Agenda Item Number Four, Second Reading Ordinance Adopting the FY 15 Budget. Seeing none, I'll move to the final voting item for this evening, which is Agenda Item Number Five, a Single Reading Ordinance Awarding a Contract for Retrofitting Certain Light Fixtures at New Hampshire Avenue Rec. Center. Okay, seeing none for that. We'll move along to the next item, which is public comments on non-voting items and other matters. So, anybody who wants to comment on any of our work session items or anything not on the agenda? Yes. And if you can please identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Williams and council members. My name is Joseph Radzavich. My last name is spelled Romeo Alpha Delta Zulu India Echo Victor India Charlie Hotel. It's my first time appearing in front of the Tacoma Park City Council. It's a pleasure to be here. I live on 7050 Eastern Avenue. I'm actually a resident in Washington, DC, although I feel very close to your community, because you're right across the street from me. And I'm here tonight to just let you know, if you weren't aware already, of a very disturbing public notice that Womata has issued regarding the Womata EYA Tacoma Proposed Development. I say it is very disturbing for a couple of reasons, and I'll try to put this in the context of your role in the city council. As you remember, in 2013, you passed a resolution, which I can say, I think, both sides of the street and Eastern Avenue were very pleased with, communicating a number of concerns, including the issue of preserving green space, including the green space in front of the 7-Eleven, as well as the green space that is the buffer between the parking lot and the garden apartments on Eastern Avenue. Well, in addition to that, Mayor Williams came to the Womata meeting a couple of months ago, talked about working together, et cetera. Well, now, this public notice that has come out acts as if your resolution and Mayor Williams' olive branch, if you will, never happened. It does not take into consideration any of those concerns. It is as if no input was provided at all. They're still pursuing a development that has a number of issues in terms of height, not being compatible with the develop—the surrounding community, issues with parking, complete destruction of green space. And I'll note, the discussion back in, I think it was March or April, talked about preserving at least some of the green space. The new public notice doesn't make any claim at all about preserving any green space. It's very conspicuous and absent of that. Even doesn't even use the word parking garage. If you read that, you wouldn't even realize that they're building a four- or five-story parking garage. So, this is very troubling. And I just want to close—I know I don't have too much time left. I have heard some discussion that Mayor Williams and perhaps some council members were thinking about meeting with Mr. Jack Lester from EYA, the developer. I would encourage that any meeting that takes place not be a closed-door meeting, let it be a public meeting, and it be on the record. It's better for all parties involved. And quite honestly, I think it's better for your interests, the city council members. Who knows what will be promised to you behind closed doors, a promise that likely won't be kept. Whereas, if you have something, it's in a public record, it's in public, at least if EYA makes a promise or assurance, they can be held accountable to that. So, I just want to let you be aware of that. It's something that both Tacoma Park residents, as well as DC residents, are concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph Radzavich.
If you can bring the microphone to Mr. Lovell.
Hello, this is Pat Lovell, your official peace delegate. I'd like to tell everybody that voting is coming up real soon. It's rushing right up to you, because in one, two and a half more weeks, we're going to be having the early voting. And that's on June the—I mean, we're going to have the registering to vote. That's the final day to register is June 3rd. So, get out there and register. June 12th to the 19th is early voting. So, please, don't forget that. There's no excuse for not getting out and doing it. And also, we got June 24th, which is the final day of voting. You can't let that rush on by you. You want to get a better Congress in there? You want a better Senate? You want to keep who you've got in voting in your area? Then you got to get up and do it. Voting is your voice. Don't silence it. Thank you very much. But I also want to say, and that's 36 days away from here, five weeks and one day away, 36 little days away to voting day to June 24th. And also, I'd like to say hello to Terry Siemens out there, who's a very good friend of mine, as well as a good councilman. He just got out of the hospital because he had the heart surgery. He had bypass surgery, and he just got out just the—just yesterday. And also, I'd like to ask everybody to remember, he was a councilman above and beyond the call of duty, at least for me. He was above and beyond the call of duty for almost a decade now. He's wheeled me down to the city council meetings, and he has gotten me out to vote. He's done a lot for the people of the Franklin Apartments. So, I'd like to say, from the peace delegate and also from the Franklin Apartments, we wish you a speedy recovery, and we can't wait to see you back here at our meetings doing our city good. And remember, I'd like to say we miss you. Also, I'd like to say the Franklin Apartments misses you too. Every time somebody hears about it, they're shocked. But yes, both I and the city council miss you. So, please, get on down there and recover. Get your recovery going. Thank you very much for letting me speak up. And hello, Terry, and hello, Joyce. Hello, Jerry. I wish you guys very well, taking care of him. Thank you very much. And I've got something for you, Terry. Thank you. Will somebody come up and pick this up and bring it over there to him?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I want that to get to Terry as soon as possible. He's very well-loved in Tacoma Park in Ward Four. So, please come out. We never missed you like before, say the peace citizens of Ward Four. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to make any comments on any item not on our agenda this evening or any work session items?
Yeah, hi. I'm Joe Brown. I've spoken to you before on various issues. I'm a community activist here in Montgomery County. Been in this room many, many years ago, and recently about the drone situation. I wasn't going to address the council or the community tonight until I heard the CDA. I grew up in Langley Park. The Purple Line is not—all the giddiness in this room is not a done deal, okay? The costs keep escalating, going up. They still haven't worked out the property deals with the homeowners along that Crescent Trail. It's a brilliant piece of grass, green trees, breathing space, air, which we're giving up every day. We should not be jumping on this bandwagon so quickly that it's a done deal. It's not a done deal, okay? They haven't started digging one shovel full of dirt yet in the community. So, I can understand some of the businesses in the community saying, "We'll see when it happens, if it happens," okay? And I'm not trying to naysay and say, "Well, it's not going to happen." I'm just waking everybody up that the costs are escalating, it's been delayed, there's other environmental concerns. You know, let's not move ahead with the CDA so fast about, you know, closing out businesses and changing the homeownership and moving some of these people around over there. It's—it's probably going to happen, but not definite. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gary Steinberg. I live at 7419 Cedar Avenue. And I just wanted to let you know a couple of things. One, that I strongly support developing dog park—or dog parks in Tacoma Park. It's something that would be great for the community and much appreciated by me, my family, including our dog Ralph. I also want to thank everyone that's helped to do the planning and budgeting work to move proposals for dog park forward, and encourage you that, if possible, these plans be brought to fruition as soon as possible, hopefully this year, so that we could all enjoy the benefits of a new community facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel Joe Edgell from Tacoma Dogs. I want to first say, send Tacoma Dogs condolences to Terry Siemens. Heard he had some surgery, and it was pretty serious. So, hope to see him back in the chair as soon as we can. Definitely is missed here on the council. I also wanted to update you on a few things on the dog park effort. I know you're going to have some discussions with city staff tonight about that as well. I want to first say, though, that I want to make sure that we emphasize to council to not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. I know there are a lot of questions and a lot of concerns. Some people want to outsource. Some people want to do with city staff. Some people want multiple parks. Some people want one. But before any of this can happen, we need one park. And so, while it may not be a perfect location, I think the location that the city manager has tentatively selected is a good location, and we should move forward with that particular location. I would urge you to do it, despite the fact that it's by no means the perfect location. I just don't think we're going to find the perfect location in Tacoma Park. I wanted to also let you know that so far, Tacoma Dogs has donated over $2,500 in architectural services to the dog park effort to the city, and we plan on donating more. Eric Saul, who's a local architect, is on Tacoma Dogs, and he's been the one donating the effort. So, I'd like to thank him for that. We also met with a handful of concerned residents from Ward One. Councilmember Grimes set that up, and we had a discussion with them and hopefully addressed some of their concerns. We also had an opportunity to meet with local artist Howard Connolly. You may be familiar with him, because there's a recent art installation he did. We've got him to tentatively agree to donate his labor to a functional piece of art for the dog park. We see it maybe as the kind of thing the dogs could actually use and that people could enjoy. So, we talked to him a little bit about that this last weekend. And I wanted to let you know that we continue to make efforts to try to contribute financially to this. Even though our actual financial means are pretty low, we're still able to get some of these services donated. There's a few things, however, that we need at this point from the city. One is the survey. Our chief designer, Eric Saul, can't do anything further without the survey, the electronic information that he can plug into his computer. So, we'd ask that you ask the city for that. We also need to get a firm schedule from city staff. We understand that there's still a public hearing coming up and that things probably won't be firm until then. But as soon thereafter as we can, we'd like to see a firm schedule. I want to thank you again for staying focused on this. I know there is a discussion later. I'm going to remain in case there are questions which you need to ask of Tacoma Dogs or me personally. And feel free to do that during the council discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Arthur David Olson, Hancock Avenue, with worries about dog parks. First, Councilmember Mail's favorite metrics. How do we measure the dog park program? What level of use constitutes success? What cost per use constitutes failure? Second, construction costs. I've heard a figure of $83,000 for Phase One of a first dog park. If Phase Two costs as much, and if we build one dog park per ward, that's $1 million, or about $200 per dog. More phases or more dog parks mean more money. This is at a time when the city is running a nearly $2 million deficit, and when last week, the council spent time pondering an extra $300 for a senior citizens program. Can we afford the long-term costs? Third, ongoing costs. I have to think that building attractive enclosed spaces where people and dogs mix is a magnet for liability insurance premium increases. And while I've heard an outside group volunteer to do upkeep, there's no guarantee that the group will continue in existence, and the city may be left holding the bag, both figuratively and in this case, literally. There may be a dog park maintenance technician in the city's future. I'd hope we assess the chance of that happening and the cost if it does. Whatever construction and ongoing costs are, remember to double them—excuse me—because, in fairness, the city should spend the same amount on services for cats. If it doesn't, it may face the cost of defending a lawsuit from cat owners, which raises the question of priorities. Why is the city providing for dogs rather than cats? More importantly, the city has been asked to accelerate the process of dog park construction. Should that be given priority over expediting work at people parks, works that's been frustratingly long in the pipeline? I know the political answers. What are the civic answers? Finally, what about ownership? The city could build and maintain dog parks. A nonprofit group could also do so, perhaps assisted with grants or fees from the city. Commercial dog parks could be part of the mix. If commercial dog parks are created, they'll help achieve the city council's stated goals of economic development and job creation. If commercial dog parks aren't created, what do the business people know that we don't about the demand for parks and the cost that they entail? Our city manager wants to exercise fiduciary responsibility in this matter. I'd like the council to provide the necessary time. We may be embarking on a multimillion-dollar trip. Let's make sure we know where we're going before we start. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Ian Barclay, Cedar Avenue. I just want to follow up on the business about Langley Park. I was in the Crossroads area this afternoon. And if they want to encourage business and traffic and up the yearly income of the businesses over there, they need to clean the filth up, because that place, having grown up around here, that place is filthy, particularly on the Prince George's County side. And most people are off put by the level of trash and debris and broken glass and baby diapers, and you just can run the gamut if you pay any attention at all. And until that's addressed, I don't see a whole lot going on over there. And as to the dog park, having grown up in Tacoma Park and remembering when Tacoma Park was a place where people, rather than finding tax dollars to get things done, they did it themselves. I would like to suggest that the council engender a contest amongst the citizens, but most particularly amongst teenagers in high school time. Maybe even send it out to Montgomery College or something like that, to ask that—because we're not talking about building a giant, very incredible building. We're talking about surveying a lot and putting up a chain We're talking about surveying a lot and putting up a chain link fence and maybe a few benches and a few other kinds of amenities like a water fountain or something like that. You know, once we identify an area and get a survey, get the children, and by children I mean teenagers or young adults or adults, and I'm very happy that the dog park people have been providing some services, get somebody to design it and give them a prize, give them an award, because they'll certainly save a whole lot of money over hiring out some high-priced consultants or, you know, landscape architects. I mean, after all, it is just a place with a fence where dogs can run free. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move on to council comments. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Mayor, I just wanted to update fellow city council members and residents on the youth summit that's coming up on June 12th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Student Activity Center at Washington Adventist University. This is a collaborative effort that has been led by CHEER, the Tacoma Foundation, and the Tacoma Recreation Committee. They have been meeting with members of the community over the last few months to look at how we can work together to help young people in Tacoma Park prepare and better transition to adulthood. This first youth summit will focus on employment readiness, and we're hoping that folks in the community as well as young people will join us that day. I had the pleasure last week of joining a discussion group of 20 young people in the REC Center to talk about their priorities for Tacoma Park and what they would like to see this collaborative effort come up with. And I just thought there was, mentoring came up a great deal, and I wanted to read this quote by one young man in the discussion group. He said, "Everyone has potential, and you just need sometimes someone to help bring it out in you." And I thought that was a great sum up of what the folks who are looking at this collaborative effort to do for the young people in our community. So, I just wanted to let everybody know, June 12th, and I hope people can come out and join us.
What is the timing of the day?
Seven to 9:00 p.m. in the evening.
Okay.
It's at the Student Activity Center at the Washington Adventist University.
Switch is probably Wilkinson Hall on Flower Avenue. Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. Well, as usual, thanks to everyone who came out to comment. Mr. Radzovich brought up the Womata Compact hearing, which has been scheduled. That is regarding the proposed Tacoma Metro joint development with developer EYA, well, with the subsidiary that they set up. And as Mr. Radzovich mentioned, that is scheduled for June the 18th, which is a Wednesday. I'll add a few details. That is going to be at the Tacoma Education Campus, which is at, on Piney Branch Road Northwest where Cedar Street hits it. And that's going to be 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. with a public information session at 4:30. I'm going to make sure that people in Ward 1, especially the neighborhoods that are immediately adjacent to the Tacoma Metro Station, get proper notice. I know there was some concern that the notice that Womata was putting up was put up in a really shoddy manner and so on. And so, I'm looking forward to that hearing myself, not necessarily in a very positive way. Something much more positive, I had a great time at the Celebrate Tacoma Festival yesterday, which was held behind this building at the Tacoma Piney Branch Neighborhood Park. So, thanks to the Recreation Department for a great job producing that, and I'll mention for their immediate responsiveness to some concerns from some of the neighbors there, to Tacoma United for an engaged community, to the Tacoma Foundation, to the Recreation Committee, all of which were, took part in organizing. And thanks to the people in this room, Mr. Edgell on behalf of Tacoma Dogs who tabled there, Ms. Isis on behalf of the Development Authority. It was good to have some time to talk to you then, as well as last week, about some Crossroads concerns that we'll pick up later. So, and also congratulations to Daryl Braithwaite for winning an Azalea Award. And I wouldn't, I don't want to run down a list of Azalea Award winners, but I'll call out for congratulations Julie Tadio and Catherine Cummings, the Safegrope proponents who were recognized for their work with an Environmentalist Award. Thanks.
Councilmember Schultz.
This coming Thursday, May 22nd, I'm holding a community meeting in the neighborhood of, neighborhood east of New Hampshire Avenue that bordering East West Highway. This is an area that used to be in Ward 2, it is now in Ward 6, and this will be the first opportunity that the community will have to get, get together under my role as their representative on the city council. I've extended invitations, personal invitations, to each of the, I think there's seven businesses in, along that section of New Hampshire Avenue and East West Highway inside the city of Tacoma Park. The two churches and the school, hoping to attract the leaders of those institutions as well as the two dozen or so households that are there. This meeting will be in the Grace United Methodist Church on New Hampshire Avenue at 7:00 p.m. That's this Thursday, the 22nd. Just come, there may or may not be cookies. I can't seem to inspire anyone to, to do anything in that regard, so I may, so there's no guarantees for cookies and juice. But we're going to have the police chief there, Daryl Braithwaite, Director of Public Works, and Eric Anosberg, the planner, who's going to be presenting the latest plans on the Ethan Allen Gateway. A lot of material to cover. It's a public meeting. Anyone in the world is invited to come and join in. The more the merrier. It's a big room that the, the church has offered, and I also want to publicly thank the pastor, Pastor Johnson, who has been so kind as to let us take advantage of the church's space. So, I'm excited about this, and I look forward to seeing folks there. At 7:00.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to remind everyone that tomorrow, May 20th, a portion of the day's proceeds from Mark's Kitchen will be given to the Tacoma Park Jazz Festival, and that's from noon to 9:00 p.m. The Jazz Festival will be on June 8th downtown Tacoma Park from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. One other thing is, I would like to ask Deputy City Manager, I, a question. I had a conversation with local resident Mike Taber. He mentioned that some city staff stopped by his house about creating a CSA here at the community center. I would ask that you could follow up with him. I could send you his information if you don't have it. All right. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? I've just got a couple of things to mention. I stopped by the Tacoma Park Cooperative Nursery School Garden Party on Saturday. I know Councilmember Stewart was there. This was an opportunity to talk with folks there. A reminder for folks who don't know that, their facility is on Flower Avenue. They've been in existence since sometime in the 40s. It depends on when you count it, probably 1942, that they have been a cooperative nursery school in Tacoma Park. They're continuing to look at options on where they can move to have a better facility and expand where they are. They're currently at their Flower Avenue location in a residential neighborhood, and there's some issues, as you would expect with a nursery school adjacent to other single-family houses, so they are exploring options on where they might move. They've been exploring options for a number of years, but they're talking with any and everybody, including people who are potentially submitting responses to their city's request for proposals on Tacoma Junction. They're talking to Washington Adventist Hospital, they're talking to developers elsewhere, they're talking with property owners, so they're looking to expand their presence and keep themselves in Tacoma Park and keep themselves a cooperative nursery school. I'll also add that I enjoyed my time at Celebrate Tacoma yesterday and at the Azalea Awards, and it's always nice to honor people who have been so dedicated to helping the community and providing things that they do in any number of ways. And I mentioned as I introduced the Azalea Awards that the city is looking forward to expanding opportunities for people to be recognized. And finally, I'll just mention that I enjoyed going around to some locations on Saturday for the Tacoma Porch Festival. There were music groups playing on many porches in Tacoma Park in a much expanded area from the program last year, and I saw any number of people who were not Tacoma Park residents there who expressed their admiration for that type of program in the city and wished that they could do it in their location and were happy to come to Tacoma Park. And I think that's it for council comments. City manager, have any comments?
City manager should be here in a few minutes, but I do have some comments if I'm all right. Also, this weekend was the library book sale, and I understand they netted about $2,500. And just like Celebrate Tacoma, it was a beautiful day, so that was very helpful. With Celebrate Tacoma, one of the things that I do want to note is that there were so many children there, and it was a lot of fun to see just people jumping in on the tug-of-rope, and it was, it was a fun event.
Yeah, but they jumped in on the winner's side, not the loser's side.
No, I would see people, "Oh, we got to help on this side." And they would run over and try to, try to help out. Last Thursday, the county council had its reconciliation vote. Their final vote on their budget will be this Thursday, the 22nd. There were several items that were important to Tacoma Park that were discussed at the reconciliation, especially Piney Branch Pool, which is in the, is looking to receive $72,000 for Adventist Community Services for pool operations, $40,000 for a facility assessment of the structure, and $10,000 for maintenance funding. So, that's likely to go forward. I haven't heard any, I'm sorry, it's your question.
Councilmember Leventhal had said that the Fed Committee, Fed? Oh, that, no.
HHS?
I thought he said the Fed Committee had recommended $72,000, an additional 72 beyond what the county executive had put in its budget of 72.
This is, this is the reconciliation amount.
So, it is an additional.
It is an additional. $72,000 for pool operations, and additional, $40,000 for a facility assessment, and $10,000 for maintenance funding. Also on the reconciliation list was $5,000 towards the study of the New Hampshire Avenue REC Center's future use. And there, we're still trying to get some of the details on this, but it looks like we will be receiving $349,000 towards our cable operating expenses in return for some of the capital, cable capital funds that we're not able to spend. And this is a one-time thing, mostly to make up for this current fiscal year, which they had promised to give us, and they didn't. The MOU is still outstanding, but those were good things to see on their reconciliation list. The vote, the final vote on that, though, is this coming Thursday, so it's not finalized. A very small thing, but a nice thing for us here at the building, is that tomorrow we'll have our first food truck. LA Taco will be here from 11:00 to 2:00 on Maple Avenue in front of this building, and we anticipate it will be popular. So, we have a new process for signing up for food trucks, and this is the first one that will be at this location.
If you could ask Craig to post something, if he hasn't already, on Facebook and the Twitter feed?
Yes.
That'd be helpful.
Just a couple of things to follow up on. One, I noted at least two food trucks that still use polystyrene packaging, so just some reminders on that.
Right. We have, we've got new policies in, in play for them, and we're trying to be diligent about that and work with everybody to, to make sure that they move to the right materials.
I would think especially getting it right for the ones that are at the city building first.
It would be very nice.
It'd be nice. And then, could you just explain in a little more detail the, the cable operating funds, the resolution? Mostly what I'm just trying to understand is, compared to previous year's amounts that we receive, are we coming out somewhere near where we've come out in the past, or are we?
No, this is, this is, this is different. This is new, because we tend to get a fairly small amount of regular cable operating expenses from our franchise agreements and fairly large amounts of funds that can only be used for cable capital. The, we had thought we had a deal for this year, which would be that, basically an agreement to go with the county so that a larger proportion of the franchise funds that were operating funds would come to us in return for them getting a larger portion of cable capital funds, which they particularly need for fiber net connections to different schools around the county, which we support as a good use of those funds. That agreement did not take place this year for two reasons. One is the Comcast negotiations have dragged on longer than was anticipated, and the second is that there were some staffing changes at the county, and so the ball got dropped from people who knew what to do with it. So, what this means, if it goes through, is that we would basically get $349,000 in funds that aren't tied to a specific use for the, for the general budget. The anticipation for those is for a lot of the operating expenses, for staff and maintenance that aren't regular capital expenses.
What I'm trying to understand, though, is that we, in previous years, we had some amount that came to us for operating, but more for capital.
Right.
And so, the sum total of those two is, you know, X thousand or $100,000. So, is the amount of operating and capital under this amount, if it goes forward, is it similar to that, or is it less than that, or is it more than that?
For this particular one-time payment, we would be giving up more capital than we are getting in operating. So, it would go down a little bit, although the, the general amount in all of those categories have gone up for this year.
And is it tens of thousands, or is it hundreds of thousands?
It's hundreds of thousands. The, I think it's going to be about $760,000 in cable capital that we will be giving to this county in return for the $349,000 in operating. I can get to you the exact figures for how that all compares, but we have $3 million in cable capital funds that we are trying to spend, but we don't have that much in programs, in projects to spend it on.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll make sure you get the totals and how it looks over time.
And one other thing, if you can just confirm that, that what, what we're attempting to do here is to reflect what had been in the county's budget for this current year
That's right.
And what we assumed in setting up our budget.
That's correct. And, and that is frankly the reason that the county council put it on the reconciliation list, because they felt that the county let us down in having something reflected in the budget that we then put in our budget for FY14, that then that they did not follow through on. So, this was more a guilty thing than a, the right way to go forward or any of that kind of thing.
And so, what's reflected in the proposed FY15 budget from, from the county and, and in our budget?
Both in the county and our budget goes back to the old system where we get very little in operating and a lot in cable capital.
So, back to the problem that we're trying to fix?
I'm sorry?
Back to the problem that we're trying to fix.
That's correct.
Okay.
I'd love to have us schedule another session with our, the law firm that's negotiating on our behalf.
I think it's a good idea.
But presumably, by this time next year, maybe the franchise negotiations with Comcast will have gotten to a point where the county can reach an MOU with us.
Yes. First of all, let me say that I personally don't think that it is the issue of Comcast that's the problem here. Nevertheless, it's, it's kind of the excuse that's been given. There should probably be a resolution to the Comcast negotiations within the next month or so, so I'm not thinking that that will take very long. We also are just getting into Comcast, into negotiations with RCN, and so there's an opportunity for that. However, most of our money and most of our cable capital funds do, comes from Verizon, the franchise agreement that we have with Verizon. That won't be renegotiated for a number of years. Nevertheless, we do believe- Nevertheless, we do believe that we can have an agreement with Montgomery County that kind of deals with those Verizon funds in a better system. I think it could be done immediately, but getting everybody at the table and getting that agreed to will take just a little bit.
I understand. Just changing the subject briefly, the $5,000 in the tentative reconciliation for the New Hampshire, that's going to -- that's not increasing the total budget amount of 45, it's just substituting their $5,000 in our budget that we would have otherwise.
No, this is the additional $5,000, but it's also part of the kind of arrangement that we're helping out the Piney Branch Pool with $5,000.
Ah, okay. All right. So a sleight of hand.
It was our request when we decided to put something forward on the pool, we said, and gee, you really ought to do this for us, and they are.
Right.
Of course, that $40,000 for the Piney Branch facility assessment worries me a bit because, you know, of the disposition to consider converting the pool into a gym.
That's right, but we did ask that the county look at the opportunity to have a separation of the pool from the school so that the pool could be used by others during school hours.
And back to the cable for just a second. My sense is that part of the reason for the situation that we find ourselves in of having so much money that comes in from the franchise agreement that goes to capital and not so much for operating is because of the, as you said, that we get most of it from Verizon, and it's because the increasing amounts that are tied to people's use of Verizon FiOS.
Yes, there is that. Each of the different franchises have slightly different arrangements and conditions on the way that the funds can be used. Each of them is a little bit concerned about setting a precedent for other, you know, for the future, and there are some federal laws that make it more advantageous to keep the kind of cable capital line. All of those things can be dealt with, but I do appreciate the request to have our attorney go through some of those options with us.
Okay.
Can you briefly talk about the FY16 CIP for Flower Avenue?
It was remarkably very quiet. Once the committee made the discussion, made the decision to move the split of the $200,000 that the county will be contributing to the Flower Avenue project, what it was going to be $70,000 in FY16 and $130,000 in FY17. We did request that it be moved to all in the FY16 budget, the CIP for the county, and that has been done. They didn't have to go back over rounded on Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about the deputy city manager's report? Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on. We will now take up our first special session item, and this is the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2015 tax rate. Would somebody like to move the ordinance?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Smith, second by Councilmember Grimes. Is there any additional council discussion on the FY 2015 tax rate? We had first reading ordinance adopted last week. And we had a number of comments about it at that time, just as we had a number of comments about all of these budget items that we're taking up tonight on second reading. Seeing none, this is second reading ordinance. Will a court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Mail?
No.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
That passes four to two. We now need to vote to convene to go into session as the Stormwater Management Board. Would somebody like to move that?
I'll move that.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Schultz, second by Councilmember Mail. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in session as the Stormwater Management Board. We agreed on that unanimously.
Please note that there's information at your places that there's a revision to the ordinance related to the Stormwater Management Budget. It's changing a citation in the second whereas clause about the local government article of the Code of Maryland. So that change has been reflected in the document that's before you.
Thank you. So with that notation, would somebody like to move the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2015 Stormwater Management Budget? Moved by Councilmember Schultz, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Stewart. Is there any council discussion on the Stormwater Management Budget? Seeing none, this is second reading ordinance. Will a court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Mail?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We will now move to agenda item number four, which is the second reading ordinance adopting FY 2015 budget. Would somebody like to move that ordinance?
I'll move it.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Stewart, seconded by Councilmember Mail. Is there any further council discussion on the FY 2015 budget? Councilmember Mail?
Just one brief comment. I find when I go back to look at previous year's budgets and try to understand the differences between the proposed budget and the adopted budget, that there, I at least personally am challenged to always understand the differences. So I just would ask for some time with staff, as we, assuming that we vote for the document before us, to talk about how to try to summarize that information, at least for me. And having been through it, I sometimes feel like I should understand what the changes are, and I don't, so I'd just like to work with staff on that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, will a court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes?
Aye.
Councilmember Mail?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We will now move to agenda item number five. This is a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for retrofitting certain light fixtures with LED fixtures at the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center. Does the Public Works Director want to say anything about this one?
This is a continuation of our efforts to use the money we got from the Smart Energy Communities grant through the Maryland Energy Administration. We put out a bid for lighting retrofit. Only one vendor responded, which is the company that we're currently using for the lighting upgrade in this building. I'll just note here that the cost for the project will actually net nothing for the city between the grant and the Pepco rebates will cover all the expenses of the project. However, the city will have to pay Elysian for the lighting and the labor and then get reimbursed from both sources. It's hard to know how long that's going to take. We've already gotten some payments from the Maryland Energy Administration for the first round of work we did, so they seem to be processing it quickly. However, we have yet to make the formal submission to Pepco for the refunds or rebate, so we don't really know the timeline for that. The last thing I just wanted to add, as I was quite excited about this project, it is a little bit of an oddball. The building is owned by Park and Planning. We pay the utility bills. Park and Planning has not shown a real interest in maintenance or upkeep of the building. If anybody's been in the gym in particular lately, the buzz from the ballast and the lighting is just atrocious. So I brought Elysian over there while they were doing our audit and said, "Can you do anything here?" Really just thinking about the gym lights. And they identified a whole series, $30,000 worth of work, that will actually reduce the amount that we pay for electricity in that building by about $5,000 a year. And will provide a much better quality of light, will eliminate the buzzing sound in the gym, and I think in general will just improve the ambiance of the building to the degree that lighting can.
I ask a question.
That's Speaker Schultz.
Thank you. About how long do you think it'll take for the contractor to begin and then complete?
Well, usually the order time for the bulbs and fixtures is kind of the hurdle. In working this out with Park and Planning, they informed me that they have a Buy American requirement, so we were able to convert some of the fixtures that were originally planned to be American-made or American-assembled. There are some tubular lights that are not adequately manufactured here in the United States, so Park and Planning is reviewing our request to give us a waiver for that. They don't have the warranty or get the rebate from Pepco that the non-American-made lights were. So about 50% of the lighting will be American-made, about 50% not. All that's just to say that there's an order time, which typically is about three weeks for the fixtures. So if we approve this tonight, we'll sign a contract with them, they'll then.
What I was trying to get to is the actual work, the length of period that the contractor will be in the facility.
In the building? A couple of days.
Just a couple of days to get all of this work done? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Some of it's exterior lights, a lot of the exit signs, they change out very quickly. The biggest challenge, of course, would be the scaffolding that gets them up to the gym lights to make those changes.
So except for the gym, there'll probably be very little disruption of any programs?
Yeah, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Mail?
Mr. Bray, wait. Thank you. I guess a couple of questions. Any concerns in terms of the future uses of this project? We just talked about the county budget and the idea of doing a study of future uses. Are we, you know, making an investment that then we're going to turn around and think about building a new building there, or?
Well, that could certainly be a possibility. One of the reasons I would encourage moving ahead is because it will reduce our annual electricity payments as soon as the fixtures go in, and the actual cost to us for doing the project is going to be covered by two grant sources, so we don't have any, won't have any out-of-pocket money. Seeing how long it's taken, the discussion to move anywhere from Park and Planning and the use of the facility, and given the challenge of its location right between the two counties, I don't anticipate that taking place in a short amount of time. Even a couple of years will pay for the project and improve the ambiance of the facility, particularly in the gym, you know, in the immediate term.
Second question, or comment really, the nearby apartment buildings, Hampshire Towers, and I think one of the other ones, have just massive floodlights at the top of the buildings that illuminate the whole neighborhood. I don't know whether, what technology those lights are, but it seems to me that the installation of lights at the Rec Center could be an opportunity to try to convince those buildings or just essentially say, "Hey, we're doing this, and we're planning to save $5,000 a year in lighting costs, and here's this contractor right here who you could talk to about it."
Yep.
It might turn into nothing, but I'm assuming those are a significant use of power, so that's just a comment. And then a comment from my colleagues and the public. I had talked earlier, and some residents or the community in the environment has mentioned this as well, about the idea of creating a sustainability fund. And so, you know, one of the ways that one could capitalize a sustainability fund is by taking the cost savings when we make a project like this happen. So if it's, you know, $5,000 a year, or if Pepco is paying us back $20,000, one could then say, "We're going to take that $20,000, we're going to take that $5,000 per year," and essentially keep track of it in a sustainability fund. On one level, that's really just an accounting gimmick, but it also meaningfully shows and would track over time how the city's investments in sustainability are essentially accumulating some balance that comes from sustainability efforts. And it's not a perfect, you know, it's not a perfect way to account for it, because obviously we're spending money to get the, to make the projects happen in the first place. But if we did that for a series of projects, it would potentially allow us to essentially capitalize a fund that we could then use to do other projects. Thank you.
Would somebody like to move this ordinance?
I'd be happy to move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Schultz, seconded by Councilmember Stewart. Any further council discussion? It's a single reading ordinance. Will a court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes?
Aye.
Councilmember Mail?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We will now move to our work session, agenda item number six. And this is the discussion of the extension of the CDA boundaries and the ordinance amending the chapter 8.36, Commercial Management Districts. This is a continuation of where we were before, and it'll be maybe introduced with a slightly shift, slight shift in focus by Housing and Community Development Director DeHates.
Good evening. Before you begin your discussion, I wanted to point out some of the more significant changes that we are proposing in response to the CDA's request that they continue to, that the ordinance be amended to allow their continued operation. The points are highlighted on the work session page, but I just wanted to touch on them briefly for you. As noted in the cover memo, the CDA has asked for their organization to continue through to June 30th, 2021. In speaking with the city attorney, however, she has recommended that we eliminate the sunset provision. That's on page nine of nine. And that would then allow the CDA to continue to operate until such time as they decide that they no longer, there's no reason for their existence any longer, at least in this format, or the council could go through at a future date and decide that the CDA is no longer appropriate as well. This would prevent the periodically coming back and going through this whole process of discontinuing the enabling legislation that the CDA needs to operate. The other item I wanted to point out is that the preliminary ordinance that we drafted allows for the expansion of the CDA. And if you go to the very last page, the planning staff has prepared just a rudimentary map for you, showing you the current boundaries of the CDA, and then a small leg that they would like to include within their boundaries because of the commercial nature of those properties. When the CDA was originally established, it was primarily a strip of residential buildings that have over time converted to more commercial space, primarily offices. But the orange area is the current CDA's boundaries, and then that small leg that runs from Ann Street, where the Farmers Market will be locating, up to Carroll Avenue would be included in their boundaries as it's proposed. There are a number of residential buildings within that stretch, so rather than having it jump from property to property, we're proposing that those properties be included within the boundary but be considered exempt, so they would not have to pay any license fees.
And the exemption would hold until somebody changed the exemption, which might come after the use changes? If there are use changes at the end?
The exemption would hold until the CDA came back and asked that they no longer be exempt, or the use of the building changed. Right now--
But it would require--
It would require coming back to the city council and changing the ordinance. So say, for example, the Purple Line gets built, the sector plan and the new zoning, everything clicks, and all of a sudden there's all this redevelopment in that area. Those land uses could change, or there could be residential component introduced into the CDA's existing boundaries. And it would make sense at that point in time to evaluate their license structure.
So it could work either way?
It could work either way, yes.
Where is the actual exemption for residential? I see the definition of residential. Is it an exemption, or is it just that there's no fee enumerated for residential?
It's considered exempt, and on page--
I see that there's no fee enumerated in the last two pages.
Page two, under exempt business is the definition.
Thank you.
There's one, two, three, four categories you see on page two. Two of nine.
Yeah, I don't see residents listed there.
It's in item number three.
Oh, okay. I didn't see the last part of the sentence.
Tucked away behind in the end.
Are there any instances where there are professional offices within residential buildings?
Yes. In that new stretch, there are in professional build, it's not a residence--
But the city guy attorney is confident that they are not exempted, the professional offices within--
They're not exempted. It's the use, as opposed to what the design of the building was originally.
Yeah, because the word facilities could be taken to mean a whole building.
If you look, we have a definition that she has expanded for professional uses.
On page three, in the middle.
On page two.
Yeah.
And so the focus is more on what's taking place within the building as opposed to the actual character of the building. So on the corner of Ann and University, for example-- So the, on the corner of Ann and University, for example, those are four plexes that have converted over time.
So what I'm getting at is it might be desirable to say residential units rather than residential facilities.
Okay. The third...
Oh, no, I'm sorry. It does define, first time I'm looking at this, it does define residential facility means specific apartments and units, so forget I said that.
Okay.
It's the first time I'm looking at this.
We can, I will forget what you just told me. Okay. The third point that I wanted to make sure that you're aware of is that there has been a restructuring of their board membership. So they have, continue to have at-large members, but the director, membership of the Board of Directors has been changed, so it's more focused on areas that they're representing as opposed to the type of businesses that they represent. And that's on Page Five. So you'll note there's, we're focusing on the quadrants, the geographical area, as opposed to whether or not it's a chain store, property owner, or a professional, making it much easier and ensuring that there's a geographical representation within the CDA itself on the board.
And some of those changes are on the following page, Page Six, where those types of businesses are crossed out.
Correct. Yeah. And to go back to the map on the last page, you'll note that there's one, two, three, four. Those are the four areas that would be represented by that area director position.
Do you have an estimate of how much more you'll, the CDA will get in fees by incorporating the additional properties?
I will turn that over to Melanie to answer, which is kind of a segue into the next point. As Mr. Teague and Ms. Isis had indicated, they're looking at increasing their license fees. That's included on Page Seven. The actual fee has changed, as well as the maximum fee. And the first three years, the first fiscal years coming up, it's, will be increasing roughly 30% each year under each category, with a maximum fee of $5,000. That is currently $3,500. And then once they get up to July 1st, 2018, then it kicks back into the CPI index and becomes a more routine increase. And the initial, or the front-loading of the fee increases is to acknowledge the fact that the fee has basically not changed since the organization was established, and that to meet the ongoing needs and demands of their membership, the additional resources are needed to facilitate the marketing and promotional activities that Melanie has planned, as well as address some of the other issues that the membership has expressed concerns about. And then the last point I wanted to note is that on Page Eight, we have essentially eliminated the language that would indicate that the city would be responsible for collecting fees. It's been an understanding for the last several years that the city will not be collecting the license fees for the CDA, and this was an opportune time to eliminate that text from the ordinance.
Last word of F, there is misspelled, unpaid. Next, Van.
Oh, yes. Again, this is a preliminary draft, so if there are additional changes, we'll make those between now and the first reading, which I believe is scheduled for next Tuesday.
Question with regard to the paragraph with the city's involvement of collection. Is that something that you and Ms. Isis have talked about?
Not specific with this particular draft. Several years ago, there had been an ongoing conversation regarding the city's responsibility for collecting license fees. And the CDA has, for many years, collects its own delinquent fees with a collector that the city would do.
Yeah. I know that maybe about three or four years ago, the previous executive director approached the then-city manager because of a problem of collecting, to see if the then-city manager would be interested in taking on this responsibility, with the hope that it would result in better, higher rate of collection, and that was turned down by that person. But, and so it's not been done in recent years, or perhaps if ever, I don't know.
I believe it's never been done. There may have been one year when the CDA was initially established, where the city would bill and go out and collect fees. It's my understanding that the code enforcement officers, for example, would issue notices of violations, and then citations, et cetera, which becomes a very lengthy and expensive process when you start involving code enforcement staff and the city attorney and court costs and all of that. So it has not been done in the last 20 years.
I know that the CDA, and I'm not trying to preempt any comments from our guests here tonight on this, did decide, under the circumstances, to hire a collection agency. And as a result, I think their cooperation they've been getting from, there's just the very few who were chronically recalcitrant, for the vast majority have always paid on time. But that seems to have improved the level of cooperation.
They'd be in a better position to answer that question than maybe.
Yes, they would.
Did you want to answer the, you had a question regarding the increase in the fees?
I have to admit, I haven't looked at it recently, but one of the issues with that area is that most of those buildings were four-plex residencials, so they don't have a lot of square feet. The way our license fees are structured is retail pays the most, property owners the least, and professionals in the middle. Most, all of them are professionals. So my recollection is it was about $6,000.
Okay.
So there's just not a lot of square footage, but that was before the increase, not a huge influx.
Thank you.
But, so for any one of the tenants, since there's, they're four-plexes, since some of those businesses take up a whole floor and some just take up a half of one floor, the actual, the fee that if they're a professional, in absolute dollars, probably not going to be an enormous sum of money.
It's not going to be huge enough. No, because they're not big spaces. You know, it might be like $80 or $90 for something small, if you had the whole floor.
For the whole year?
Yes, for the whole year.
Right.
Yeah. But that's on the old rate, but not a great deal of money.
Right.
Because it's all about square footage.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes, did you have leftovers?
Yeah. I guess, let me start with a question. What do you, Mr. Teague and Ms. Isis, think about removing the sunset for the reauthorization? You were requesting six years, and you noted that six years is a good time because of changes that are, we know are underway, but are hard to project how they're going to affect us, the transportation situation and so on. What's your reaction?
Well, I can, speaking as a business owner, we're imposing fees on our members for their benefit. We, I always supported the idea that if we became irrelevant, we should go away. And while I don't think we have become irrelevant, we're here tonight because we don't think we have, the future is always uncertain, I do think a sunset provision does force upon us, as well as certainly the council at the time, to consider that. Now, we're coming before you after two years because of certain special circumstances. Before that, we were reauthorized for 10 years. So I'm not suggesting that we have a very short time to constantly be bringing, coming back forward, but I personally think there's absolutely no reason not to continue to have some limit, at which point we will be forced to, if nothing else, as we've done over the last couple of years, discuss them on ourselves. And I will say, there were, you know, there was serious discussion as one option of, well, should we just simply disband?
Sure.
And I think it enabled us to kind of come together and say, no, this really matters to us, versus, well, it's here, it's always been here, so it'll always be here. So I actually am not in favor of it. That's, we haven't taken this up before our board because it wasn't what the board's proposal was, nor have we taken it before our membership. So clearly, the city could let the ordinance go on, and we could still, on our own, say, hey, every 10 years, we'll consider this. But that's my opinion. So, you can have a different opinion, Melanie. Don't feel, I'm retiring anyway, so don't worry about me.
Yeah. There's actually sort of a sea change going on in our organization, because Neil has been president for 17 years. We just had elections in April, and we're having four long-term board members, including Neil, leaving the board, and four new people coming on. And the other board members have been on there for years and years and years. So we're kind of, I mean, we have a new logo, we have, you know, a new approach, trying to reinvigorate our organization, we're trying to bring in some new, diverse business owners to contribute to our future. I think it could go either way. I actually think it's probably useful to come back and talk, and tell you what we're doing. You know, I'd be happy to do that on an annual basis.
Definitely should.
Whether, you know, whether we are, we're here for reauthorization or not, I mean, I think we need to talk about what we're doing, and people, people will know more about us.
If I could also add, I mean, again, the Purple Line is uncertain, and even if the Purple Line comes, its impact is uncertain. But if it, if anything like the vision of the sector plan starts to be realized here, we'll have a very different area with very different needs and different constituencies. And I think there will be a need to revisit, if nothing else, structure and so on. That was the reason for six years. I'm personally kind of indifferent to six years, 10 years, some period of time, but we, that was really, six years was picked strictly because if the schedule goes, the Purple Line should be operating in 2020. So that was, that was the theory.
Six years sounds, six years sounds good to me. 10 years would be fine also. I note that we went through an exercise last year where we reauthorized, we requested the state of Maryland to reauthorize the business enterprise zones that are along, among other places, New Hampshire Avenue and so on, and that's a 10-year reauthorization, so it's not something unprecedented or anything like that. So I, my reaction would be to reinstate the need to the sunset date. And I'm, I'll say I'm really glad that you didn't decide to disband from the conversations I've had, from the meeting I attended, what, six weeks ago or so. It seems like you're doing really important stuff, and we've had conversations directly about things like the festivals and the lack of space. I did have comment about that, which is that I wonder if the residential neighborhoods might be willing to host some kind of festival, so long as they're sufficiently visible. That's something for Councilmember Schultz to work on, I think, rather than me, but...
You're welcome to come over and...
I probably will.
Present the idea.
Well, I've been meaning to, you know, I make it over there occasionally to patronize businesses.
You will have your coupons.
Actually patronize businesses along New Hampshire Avenue and in the crossroads. So I will note, it's another reason it's great to have you there, is that you are a direct, regular, legally mandated point of interaction with the businesses that the city could find beneficial if we do move forward with certain things that we've discussed, for instance, the polystyrene ban, perhaps a food waste composting requirement and so on. So you're already established, and I would envision enlisting your help if we do move forward with those things. You're already providing technical assistance. I did find it very interesting earlier when you said that you've involved Smith School and provided, suggested technical assistance, and didn't get a whole lot of interest from the businesses, because those were things on the ULI's list and, but I noted that, you know, some of the property owner representatives were participating in the ULI panel and all of that kind of stuff, and some of the things that are in the sector plan, including maybe affordable housing and so on, are things that I would definitely like to see there. And I wonder if some of those mall owners are not obstacles, actually, to realizing revitalization of the area. I do wonder, is there a legal obstacle for the Crossroads Development Authority to be cross-border, or maybe I should say bi-jurisdictional, the same way that OTBA represents Washington, DC, and Tacoma Park, Maryland, whether you could have a similar authorization from Prince George's County to represent the businesses on that side of the line? That seems to be highly desirable, and you spoke about the need for that expanded geographical scope earlier.
I can speak to that. We absolutely could, and in fact, the original concept of this organization, while it was in Prince George's County, so it wasn't a Montgomery County issue, was that it would be authorized under legislation provided by Prince George's County and would cover all the areas. Prince George's County pulled out for political reasons, and the city stepped in to authorize us. To my knowledge, Prince George's has never revisited that.
Have we ever asked, have you ever asked?
We have, yes, we have. I can't say we pressed it, but we have, first of all, former Mayor Dill-Judas from many years ago, when he was on the Prince George's County Council, was a big promoter and supporter of that, but it didn't, didn't go then. We've talked to Will Campos about it some number of years ago. Frankly, it's never been absolutely on our priority, because we just aren't sure that the support's there from the, from the businesses on that side. But it would be wonderful if it, if it happened. I think we do a lot that benefits them.
Weren't there also efforts to get the state to do something?
Well, the state has passed the enabling legislation to create the Commercial Development Management Authority, but the counties have, or the city jurisdiction in this case, have to, you know, pass their own legislation that enacts that.
There were efforts a couple of years ago to get the state to basically work with Prince George's to get them, to change whatever needed to be changed.
Yes. I think that's still a possibility. You heard only a very small portion of Melanie's to-do list, and it's, it's really just kind of been, do we have the resources and the time to put our focus on that versus serving our members on a day-to-day basis?
Remind me, with the increased amount of funding, you're going to be increasing your hours to full-time?
I pushed it up to 30. We just don't have more, I mean, I'm not working 30, 25 or 30 hours. I'm working like my family will tell you, a lot more than that. But I'm trying to get this thing off the ground, so it takes time, investing time to do that. The TNI people are aware of us. They, I've, we've talked, I've talked to them about a bid. We have a ex officio board member who is from the Office of the County Executive, Prince George's, who's like the manager of that TNI project. I mean, I think things are changing somewhat in Prince George's, and maybe in the future, you know, the stars will align, and there'll be a good opportunity to try again. I don't know how the two major property owners on the other side would feel about that. I know one of them, I think, is quite negative about it, the Langley Park Plaza owner.
Which one is that?
That's the CVS corner, the mini mall. But, but the Langley, the other sector plan goes all the way down to Riggs Road. And so if we ever were to try to really do a bid, we'd probably have to do everything that's in both sector plans. That's quite huge, huge area, lots of commercial.
Of course, I just, I'm done with my questions, except for you make me ask, what's the next Purple Line station as you get, go toward, it is that rate?
It's right, it's right, not very far.
So Piney Branch and University would be the one on the west, and Riggs on the east.
Thanks.
Just before, a Councilmember mail. Is the property that you mentioned that's against that, whatever you call it, is Bob Hall the manager of that?
He's the manager.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
It's the McCormick-owned property.
Yeah. If I could add, one more thing about the city's support on collection. The city did used to collect our fees regularly for a number of years, because I was treasurer. And, but we've now got a good system, and it works. My only concern with eliminating the city's role is if Melanie disappears, I disappear, lots, and the organization at some future time were to fall into some disarray, it might be helpful for the city to have an ability to come in and hold things together while it came back together. It's really a rescue question for me. That was my comment two years ago when this came up. I'm not concerned personally about needing the city on any ongoing leases to facilitate collections, but I do think an organization like this, which has a budget and collects, you know, members' funds and holds them... you know, members' funds and, and holds them in trust, if we were to become disorganized, it would be helpful to have, I'm assuming the city will stay organized, I think you will, um, have an ability to, to do that. And I, I don't see the downside of leaving it in. I'm not feeling it, not adamant about it, but I just don't quite see why it creates an inconvenience for the city to leave it in. So that's my comment there.
One other clarification here before I go to council member mail. You've talked about a potential continuation for six years. The, uh, point number one on the cover sheet, basically is seven years.
Yeah.
We thought we asked for 2020.
I think we did, yeah. I think it was just a miscommunication.
Okay.
A minor thing.
Council member.
But if you know something about the Purple Line that I don't, maybe 2021's a good number.
I just saw different figures and I wasn't sure.
Yeah, this is a, a minor point and then a policy point. The, the boundaries between the southwest, southeast quadrant on the city's map and on Google Maps, it refers to Kirkland and on the description it refers to.
Kennewick?
Kennewick. What's, which is the relevant?
They run together, uh, right there at Kirkland, right around where our driveway is to our building.
Okay.
I think you could go with either one, really.
I noticed that myself. I researched it. If you Google it, the street signs say Kirkland all up, all the way from the circle there behind the shopping center. Um, and, and, and that's the common reference point that it's, that it's Kirkland. If there's any legal reason why that street might be mis-signed, I don't think that would be even material. I think it should be written as Kirkland because it is, as it's written now, saying south of Kennewick. Well, there is no south of Kennewick because Kennewick basically runs north and south.
Yeah, I've always understood that little section was Kirkland. That's certainly my understanding.
So that seems like a pretty straightforward change to make in this document. The, um, the other question, the other point I was going to make was that, um, in many places in this document, it refers to the authority in accordance with its bylaws. And I just wonder whether, because of the new inclusion of an additional geographic area, whether we would be better off in this language with the, you know, the council, the ordinance piece, just approving that there be four area directors, um, with the area defined according to bylaws and then leave the, leave the actual boundaries and names and, you know, southwest, southeast out of the ordinance part. I just didn't know if that would ever change in the future, in which case not having council involved would make, would, would make more sense than us being involved in that. It's a minor point.
That certainly makes sense to me.
Council member Schultz.
Um, getting back to the sunset question, I just would say that I'm, I'm happy with leaving it as it has been with, with the provision that you come back, uh, seek reauthorization. But more importantly, I, I, I would recommend that, that we include in here sort of, I don't know whether it really needs to be in the ordinance, but it, it could be in the intent that, that, uh, the CDA come in here once a year and sort of give us a state of the crossroads because, you know, for the last twenty-five years, the, there's not been much dynamic, you know, new, new stores, um, you know, one of the most recent new stores, the Taco Bell up there is already being torn down. So it's, it's crazy, but I mean, but now going forward, we can anticipate that there's going to be a lot of, a lot of change. Um, so that would be one thing. I, I, I think we'd benefit from that. And one of the reasons that I say that is that in this budget that we just approved tonight for this coming fiscal year, we've earmarked thirty thousand dollars of city money to be, uh, granted, uh, to the, uh, crossroads and, and the actual purposes of that money are going to need to be defined. But I, that one can easily presume that since we've been giving similar sums of money to the OTBA, that, uh, we'll be doing that same thing hopefully with the crossroads going forward. And so really what that results in is that it really is, it's a change from being a, a, well, not sure what you'd call it, but it, but it, from whatever it's been to something we could legitimately call a, a partnership. Because instead of being sort of hands-off and we'll just let the CDA do their thing and, and not pay much attention to it, now it's going to be different for obvious reasons. It's important that it be different. And with it being a partnership, um, I think it's appropriate that you guys do come in here at least annually and talk about, um, the dynamic that's going on there. My, you know, my, my internal seismograph tells me that even though we haven't seen physical change, that there's an awful lot of rumblings underneath, uh, I mean, that are starting to surface. The fact that Nightingale Properties bought the Walmart and that, 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 the, the manager of that property who doesn't live in anywhere near this area is now on the CDA board and is very outspoken about her ideas and that Nightingale is getting, you know, is going to be spending a good bit of money this summer to transform the, the appearance of their shopping center. And that's, that's just, you know, one more thing that's, that's happening. The fact that you've got the Langley Park Business Association that Jorge Sakek has, has organized is a spontaneous thing, is sort of, is sort of like, sure, there's not a lot of, there's, there's a lot of businesses aren't paying attention, like you said, but, but there's a certain number of businesses that are starting to pay attention because they all sort of sense something's happening. Um, I also agree that I think that that, having the city, the paragraph in there where the city can be a last resort for collection, like you were talking about, Mr., uh, Mr. Teague, I think it makes sense because to the extent that it is a partnership, I think that there ought to be some sort of backup for the organization, for the situation. And it may never, most likely will never be invoked, but it could be and that would be good to know. So we're going to become more interdependent as.
No, I would be happy to report on a regular basis and I promise a PowerPoint the next time. I didn't have time to get it together, but I'm, I have a lot of things I want to show you visuals. I won't do a lot of talking. You can just watch. But I mean, I, I would like to, I'd like to do, to do that regularly, so it would be fun.
Do you, Neil, do you have any other response to what I'm saying or thoughts on that?
No, I think it'd be wonderful. And, and I think, um, that yes, we've always viewed it, our role as facilitating a partnership, first of all, first of all, it's having a partnership with the city, but also facilitating outreach to both counties. We haven't been part of Prince George's County. We were, we were part of Prince George's County for the first ten, twelve years of our existence. We haven't been part of Prince George's County for more than that now, but we still recognize the role they play in the, in the crossroads and, and their representative is very active on our board, which we, which we appreciate. So I think the partnership is what really we need to be about. We have some resources of our own, which is great, but we've always known that we had to leverage those resources with, with the resources of others.
Okay. Um, maybe if I can bring Ms. Danes back up for a minute and, uh, do a quick synopsis of where I think we might be, get your reaction, double check with my colleagues and see if we can wrap this up. My sense is that if you look at the five, uh, possible changes on the cover sheet, it, it sounds like, uh, the council may want to just have the sunset in there. I'm not sure whether 2020 or 2021 is the right date, whatever people agree on.
I'll work it out with Melanie. I was just looking, I was, yes, I'll work it out with Melanie.
Okay. The expansion of the district boundary seems like that's not a problem. The restructuring of the board director's membership seems like it's not a problem with maybe some potential for some changes in the, in the language, as council member Mail suggested. Uh, the increase in membership license fees seems not to be a problem and the elimination of the obligation to collect Lincoln license fees. My sense is if there was some language that went in there that said, this is here, it's kind of the, it's the rescue option, but it's not the normal operation, that that would probably take care of everybody's concerns.
Did you want to add, um, an annual reporting requirement? We can, we can include the language like that.
I think in, in, we want that in practice. If we need to put it in here, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Are my colleagues in agreement with that synopsis of where we, where we are? Okay. Any, any questions from Ms. Danes or the CDA folks on where we are?
Those were the notes that I had. Was anything else?
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take a short break and we'll come back for our last item. We'll take a short break and we'll come back for our last item. Resume for our last item, which is a discussion of the dog park. And I guess staff has some stuff for us.
The presentation, they're trying to call up the presentation.
Yeah.
It's not. It's not on here. See if I get it.
It's like it's coming on now.
There we go.
Why is it always that kind of dogs? They're everywhere.
We're having a little-
They must have a PR firm.
Creative license. That's a creative license on the presentation.
What are they, Boston terriers?
I did not pick the dogs. This is not my-
Cute dogs. So-
That's what I said. Yeah.
As we discussed during the fiscal year 15 budget process, we wanted to be able to come back a little bit later and talk specifically about some of the locational analysis and some of staff's thinking around the potential for a dog park. Also, to convey a little bit of information to the council and hopefully get some feedback from the council in terms of locations and potential scenarios that can encompass for some dog park scenarios. So this presentation, we'll go through a few of these items. It'll look at the proposed locations. It'll look at a little bit at the site selection criteria, location analysis, some scenarios and some next steps. In terms of potential locations, there are six potential locations that we have been most thoroughly sort of evaluating. Many of these were brought forward to us by the Tacoma Dogs Organization from some previous presentations that they have made. We also went back to the 2010 council discussion where dog parks were also discussed as well as just some additional input from staff relative to what we think might be potential options. So these six sites are summarized here. You can see the wards. You can see, again, just ballpark for what the size of the dog park would potentially be. And we also just wanted to provide one more data point, which is parking, because we know that not everybody would be able to walk to a potential park no different than if it were a regular park. If it were a regular park, not everybody would be able to walk there. So we just wanted to look at some opportunities for what some of the preliminary parking alternatives would be.
The Prince George's Triangle site does have a permit parking zone, so that is germane. I don't recall whether it's a daytime or an overnight, though.
I don't remember either.
I think it's-
I think it's overnight.
I think it's overnight because of the folks across the street.
Yeah, but the presumptions, the operating hours would be dawn to dusk, right?
Probably. There would be, yes. We haven't really, as we'll talk about a little later, haven't really talked too much about lighting and some other things.
And have we lost the screen?
I don't, what do you, they're broken? Okay.
So we'll just talk through it. It's fine. So the, just in terms of some site selection criteria that some other surrounding jurisdictions have used just to get an idea about how they evaluate potential locations for a dog park, we took a look at Park and Planning's, some of their criteria. They look at size, obviously. They look at some environmental constraints. They look at distance from residential properties. They look at minimum square footage size. They look at ease of maintenance, accessible parking, and so on. And so these just give some idea of some of the criteria that we also thought about when we were looking at potential locations. Just briefly go through the six locations. Prince George's Triangle at the corner of New Hampshire Avenue and Prince George's Avenue. You can see a little bit in terms of topography, which is, it's a relatively flat site. You can see that there are some residences that are located proximate, really, on both sides of the park, with the third side being bordered by New Hampshire Avenue. Maple Avenue and Sligo Avenue. Again, you know, this site's got some topography, sort of opportunities on sort of its border, but the main area is relatively flat. However, it does sort of sit in a stream and wetland buffer zone. And so parking also, in terms of on-street parking, is something that is available at this site. Tacoma Piney Branch Park. Again, it's got some potential locational opportunities. It seems to be a relatively flat site, but it does have some other limitations that we'll talk about a little bit later on.
Can you just back to that one for a second? Identify exactly where that one is?
This is, this is behind-
Is this area behind where the stage was yesterday?
Yes, up the hill.
That's correct. Yeah, it's up underneath the trees overlooking the field.
And the big sculpture thing is just down at the bottom of the picture here?
Yes.
That's right.
Okay. Hefner Park, which is the location that is proximate to Piney Branch Park. It's, again, sort of got some fairly diverse topography. There are a few spots within the potential location that are somewhat flat, but it's got some topography changes throughout the potential park site.
On this, it's located at the end of the Darwin Avenue parking lot, and the yellow circle was staff's idea about where the park would go, somewhere in that location.
The next two parks are ones that are more notional, I think, at this point than anything else. We looked at Spring Park and just trying to think about where, if we were going to try to evaluate some alternatives for additional dog park sites, where that would, might potentially be located at. And so we-
Currently a playing field, though? Soccer field and so on?
Yes.
It is.
Similarly, Forest Park is on the side of one of the-
Exactly.
The fields.
So taking, having those sort of six sites be some potential locations, we wanted to look specifically at what some scenarios would be for the dog park. I know that in the budget discussion, some council members talked about the idea for having multiple parks perhaps be on the, be available as an option. I know that, you know, we've always sort of also thought that if you wanted to have a single park, sort of what that opportunity might look like. And so we tried to provide a few different scenarios of what could potentially happen. Sort of the middle scenario with the, dependent upon one's definition of cute, the cute dog for the pilot project, is really sort of a, it's a bit of a middle ground between those two in that it might be a singular park, but it may be a little bit more conservative in terms of some of either the amenities, the design and construction, which may facilitate it being, happening a little quicker perhaps than maybe what a premier park or a more built-out park would be. Again, just in terms of some of the criteria that we looked at, speed of construction. I know that urgency is something that has been articulated before, and I know that it's our intent to try to get a dog park operational in fiscal year 15. Looking at some design elements, obviously, location, size, and then also staff complexity, which dependent upon the location can play into who else needs to approve or have some part of moving forward with a potential park. So we wanted to look at each of these scenarios. The few small park scenario would be first. You know, the idea in terms of geography is that it would be dispersed sort of more throughout the city, having a size between 4,000 and 10,000 square feet. The design elements, again, because you're probably talking about a few parks, would be relatively simple, we think, just some ground cover, some fencing. Excuse me. Speed of construction and staff complexity, you know, we judged it as medium in that the design elements may be a little bit more simple. A lot of that speed in construction and staff complexity will be driven by the potential locations. So of those six, two of those sites are currently owned by the City of Tacoma Park, and that is the Prince George's Avenue site and Hefner Park site. The other locations are, I believe, all owned by-
All four of those on this slide are city-owned.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. That's right. Forest Park and Spring Park are as well.
So it's your estimation that no regrading or retaining walls would be needed at the Hefner Park site? There's pretty steep grade there, and I would think that-
Right. I think that there's some different things as we go through and look at the different sites.
You gonna hone in on them?
We are. We're gonna go into that. I do want to kind of note here, when we say the possible locations, the Forest Park and Prince George's Avenue are close, are fairly close together, so if we were choosing several parks, we probably wouldn't do both of those. We would just pick one or the other and one or more of the other sites.
For the Pilot Park, again, just looking at some of the potential locations, similar in terms of what would be options for a park. Again, the idea for this one is that it would be a singular park, but it would be a little bit simpler in terms of its design and hopefully then easier to construct and a little bit quicker to get up and running. And then finally, sort of a premier park, which is probably, obviously, would be something that'd be a little bit more, perhaps nuanced in terms of the design, looking at some retaining walls and/or other kinds of ground cover or other kinds of amenities, which would potentially be options. This one, you know, obviously has the opportunity to also be phased in some way, so there may be the selection of a location, and then there may be sort of a design that is able to be enhanced over time. And obviously, that also provides an opportunity for additional input or additional resources to be brought in at future years. But the idea is that this one would be sort of a singular park, and it would be sort of a, more of a flagship park, dog park for Tacoma Park. We wanted to take just a general look at all of the six locations and just look at a few criteria. These, sort of these criteria with green being yes, yellow being maybe, and red being no are by no means hard and fast, but we wanted to give, just if you were going to look at it, a quick analysis of the six parks and what potential either limitations or opportunities would be there for each one. We wanted to sort of color code it to make it visually a little bit easier to see. One of the things that I think we've passed out is a memo that was sent to us by Park and Planning, which looks at two of the sites in particular. It's the Sligo-Mapple Avenue and the Tacoma-Piney Branch Park sites. And they, because they own those two park properties, enumerate a few obstacles that would have to be overcome in some way for us to move forward with a dog park in those locations. They talk a little bit about some environmental concerns and just their, I think, their general preference that they would not put a dog park in those locations. So if we were to, if the council's direction is for us to look more seriously at that, that's going to take a little bit of time, honestly, for us to try to convince Park and Planning to put a dog park at those locations. For Spring Park in particular, if you look at minimal environmental impact, again, you know, reds and yellows can be a little interchangeable. There is obviously an underwater spring system at Spring Park, and so we'd obviously need to look at some, we'd have to do a little bit of analysis to see what the impact, environmental impact would be to that spring system if we were to put a park there. I mean, there's an existing park that's there now, obviously, but this use, we just have to evaluate whether or not that this use would change anything as it relates to that. Going further on down to, for Hefner Park, the yellow for the ease of implementation. I guess as we understand it, a lot of the existing space at Hefner Park right now is landfill. It's, it is unclear exactly what the environmental consistency is there, and so we would want to probably do some sort of geotechnical analysis just to make sure that we had a better understanding before moving forward with the construction of a park there. And obviously, then, for the last one, which is compatibility with current uses, you know, largely where you see reds is going to be where there's existing, you know, ball fields or where, you know, community members sort of currently use that space openly for impromptu things or whatnot. I mean, obviously, with any open area in the city, it's going to be used impromptu, perhaps in many cases by, as a dog park informally right now. But to make it more formal in terms of dog park use, we just wanted to look at some compatibility issues with its current use.
And just, I think, one of the ones you just skipped over, but the 200 feet from nearest residents, which is kind of the standard from Park and Planning, you know, does affect all the parks except for the Hefner Park.
Recently, Montgomery County has moved forward with the Ellsworth Dog Park, which they have been touting as a, you know, one of their premier urban dog parks. It is about 28,000 square feet, and, yeah, obviously, from our perspective, it is fantastic that there are other surrounding jurisdictions that have already done dog parks before, right? And so we can get good information from them in terms of design, construction, size and some other things. And so we just wanted to put up this dog park just to show, A, some of the amenities that are included in this park. I mean, obviously, this is a very large sort of dog park. Also, just the cost, you know, it cost them about $260,000 for design and construction. And also, a, just an estimate for what the annual maintenance cost would be for this. We actually have not confirmed yet, just going back for a second on the maintenance, whether or not this maintenance includes any potential change out of any ground cover or anything like that over a period of time. We're currently thinking that it does not, that that annual maintenance cost is just care and feeding to the existing park as opposed to doing any major-
Do we know this, oh, 28,000?
28,000 square feet. Yeah, this is planned, you know, one of the speculations that we do have to confirm is that the maintenance cost may be in addition to what, it's already a park, so they've been maintaining it already, so this may be additional cost. And we do need to find out.
Then there's operational costs, like special waste hauling, for instance, in particular.
I think that's part of, I think that's part of what that is in.
That's what we included in maintenance.
The other good thing about the Ellsworth Park is that we have good timeline information in terms of how long it took them to go from, you know, an idea to actually, construction begin. And so they identified it in 2011. They've done an analysis of potential locations. They've gone through their planning board. They've done design. They've done construction. They bid that out. And they're finally getting to starting construction in the spring of 2015. And so, you know, obviously, our intent is to beat that timeline, but it does give a general sense of what other folks have taken in terms of a timeline to get a dog park done. in terms of how long it took them to go from, you know, an idea to actually, construction begin. And so they identified it in, in 2011, they've done an analysis of potential locations, they've gone through their planning board, they've done design, they've done construction, they bid that out, and they're finally getting to starting construction in the spring of 2015. And so, you know, obviously our intent is to beat that timeline, but it does give a general sense of what other folks have taken in terms of a timeline to get a dog park For us, we wanted to put just some, some potential next steps and other considerations. As I said during the, the budget discussion, the dates to the left are really, actually this one is sort of what we've done to date, which is that in 2013, we've taken a look at getting some information back from council, we've talked to Tacoma Dogs, we've met with Park and Planning folks about it, we've done some site visits, we've gotten some letters of concurrence this year from, from the state for program open space, we've met with Tacoma Dogs to talk a little bit about budget and so forth. And then I think on the next slide, where we've got some future steps or what we would think about going forward based upon the different scenarios that we have. Again, these are just some of the notional steps. There's obviously dates that can be ascribed to each one of these, but I think the important part is to, is to note that the, the steps that we would need to take, and obviously with those parks that, that the City of Tacoma Park owns already, we can probably move a little bit more expeditiously in terms of approvals and so forth, as opposed to a site that we do not own. One of the first things, obviously, that we're gonna need to decide here, I guess in this work session, is to talk a little bit more about potential locations so that the city can get a good idea, so staff can get a good idea about where we would start to spend some money this year, this fiscal year, which is '14, in preparation for trying to get a dog park functional in fiscal year 15. So even if it is a, a park that, that, or site that we own, we've gotta go through some site surveying and geotechnical analysis potentially, gotta have some community meetings out in the locations or, or to discuss the potential locations. We, obviously, we'd wanna take that feedback, come back to council, talk a little bit about some of the things that we're hearing based upon those potential locations, you know, starting to think a little bit more about the design process as well as some of the community meetings that we would have to discuss design, and then actually moving forward to any potential permits or other things we would need to start construction and then actually getting to awarding the construction contract. So again, we just wanted to put some potential steps that we know that dependent upon the location, we'd have to go through. In terms of costs, and, you know, these are some things that we've got relatively good data on. Obviously, it really just depends on how big for things like fencing. I know that Tacoma Dogs has been great in providing us some information about potential ground cover options and, and cost items for that. Some site preparation costs, obviously, is something we'd have to think about, and again, I think we could begin that even in fiscal year 14 if we zero in on a, on a site fairly quickly. Ongoing maintenance costs is something that we'll, you know, we'll continue to, to collect information on so that we're able to, both for '15 and for '16, start to think about what it would cost to maintain the parks, and then obviously, as the design process happens, getting a sense about any amenities that we would potentially like to move forward. So just, you know, as, as you all begin to think about the, the potential for a dog park, I think some questions could be, you know, again, is it gonna be more of a single park or is there interest in pursuing sort of multiple parks? Any ideas on potential locations that, that are here or even are not here, if they're things that you all are thinking about? And then if there's any additional information to gather as we sort of look to move forward on, on, on sort of the process. I think if you, if you go back just to the previous slide, sorry, the previous, previous slide, you know, I think that the, the first two steps there, the site survey and the community meetings to discuss park locations are, you know, that's really the first step. Once, once there's sort of some consensus on potential locations, we can then start to spend money on, on, on the potential site, and so that's sort of what we're looking to get some, some feeling for so that we can move forward.
And if I can just ask you what you envision as the relationship between the potential direction tonight and the public hearing that we're gonna have next week?
I think that.
The public hearing on June 2nd.
Well, whenever it is.
Okay.
Soon.
Soon. I think tonight is, 'cause I, I think this is probably the first time that you all are receiving this information, so just some, some initial feedback, I think would be good this evening. If, if people have had any specific conversations with, with folks, it'd be good to hear about any of that potential feedback. I think that, you know, it sounds like at the public hearing, we may get some more feedback on some potential locations from community members, which I think will be good. And then I think probably more specifically after that meeting, or after that public hearing, I think we're gonna need to start to zero in on some potential locations so that city staff can, can begin to be able to do some site survey or geotechnical analysis this fiscal year. So tonight is really just absorbing it a little bit and just any initial feedback that you all have.
And I ask that question only because every time there's an opportunity for public input at a public hearing or any similar thing, it's always a question of the balance of people's reactions of, well, you haven't given me enough information to go on, if I had something to react to, I could react to it, versus, well, you've already made the decision, why are you asking me? So it's, it's that balance and wanting to make sure that we, in whatever we do tonight, we can maybe give some indications of things that are of particular interest or potential direction so that people have those to react to, but that we're not making any decisions tonight.
Just, you know, one of the things that I think is, is kind of an important concept that you may get some, have some indication right now about, but certainly you'd wanna hear from at the public hearing, is the concept of a kind of very small park versus one that's, you know, at least in the, kind of in the 10,000 square foot range, because I think that, that those really kind of function differently. And so that's part of, you know, that is part of the kind of, the information that helps us a lot about making some cost estimates.
And just a reminder, on the, I think a couple slides before this, you had the potential sizes?
Let's see, yeah, it's way up front.
And these were just estimates off of, you know?
Right.
Off of maps, they're not measured.
At least it gets at the relative potential scale of each of these sites.
I think when we did a little bit of research, I think that Park and Planning says that 10,000 is their minimum.
Is their minimum.
And I know Washington DC actually goes down to five, 4,000, I think is the minimum they would do for some of their more urban parks.
So we looked at, you know, some of the small ones, you know, we've heard some comments, I even heard some comments today that a small one, you know, don't really have as much room, obviously, for the dogs to run, and they're more a place for the dogs to do their duty and, and move on. And I don't know how true that is, but that is a comment that some have made. I think that the, you know, the other part of this is just, you can have some small ones if you've got a variety, you know, if you've got several around the, around the community, and they will look different to the people who live near them too, based on the size.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the staff's work on this and, and coming to us to get some sense of direction and how to move forward. We don't have all the information, but that's often why you have elected officials there to make those calls when you don't have all the information. Somebody's gotta take a risk to make some sense of, of direction, and, and we're the right people to take those risks. They can get rid of us a year and a half. I continue to, to support the concept of multiple small parks, but for me, it's the multiple small parks and the single, and I can't remember what you called the middle category, but the pilot project. And it's really just trying to get something built sooner. To this, to the conversation about trade-offs that the assistant city manager and city manager were just having, you know, there, there, there's, there's small dogs, there are big dogs, and, or I should say, small and active, small and not active, big and active, and not active, and then there's people, right? So a lot of the people we heard speak a year or so ago, whenever the, the meeting is where we got a lot of testimony and we had some dogs in the audience, people spoke of just the benefit of socializing. So if we build a small park, what are, you know, the, the matrix that you could have added to this is that if we build a small park, we get socialization opportunities for people and, you know, exercise for small dogs and meet and greet for big dogs, but we don't get the exercise for big dogs or for active dogs. So, and on that spectrum, you know, to me, you can build smaller parks or parks with fewer amenities, and, and we're still, to keep the metaphors going, scratching an itch of some portion of the community that, you know, in terms of the socialization between people and then, you know, benefits for small dogs. And I'm curious about the next stage of information, but to me, that triangle area on Prince George's is an area that is not used. It has a few trees, but they're not massive, you know, old, incredibly precious trees as far as I can tell. I don't, it's not clear to me that dogs really have much of an effect on trees anyway. It would be nice to have the presence of people in that area, sort of, you know, that, that edge of town. Parking is, you know, presumably it's to some extent an issue, but Forest Park is right nearby and doesn't have any particular parking issues caused by the playground and the field, et cetera. I continue to, so, so let me say that about that site, I'm open to some of these other places as well. I think Spring Park is a challenge, the field at Spring Park is a challenge, maybe not just for the reasons mentioned, but because that field is often very wet, which makes it difficult to play sports on as well. So that's really a cost issue, and one could imagine someplace like that being a viable site if we said, okay, we're gonna lose part of the human recreation area, but we're gonna improve the, the drainage under both pieces.
It's the spring.
On the upper field?
What?
I, I don't think the upper field is the spring.
I don't know, I'm not sure.
I think, I think that part's more like just, it just sits, I think. But you, the spring is definitely a problem in the, or, or an opportunity in the other part of, of the park. Water features, we need a water park for dogs. The Sligo Mill site that, I brought this up a year or so ago, and I, it's probably, you know, too, too late, but there was the property that had an abandoned house on it, the house was torn down, the city was transferring that property to the county Park and Planning. It's a, you know, it's a lot that is essentially mostly away from any residences, it's got a dead-end street, it's right behind Mid-Atlantic Seafood, so that's another site that could be considered. You know, we, and this is not for the short term, but if we were thinking about the list of two or three, doing something like a 10-year lease on the portion of the, I think it's owned by the university, the parking lot below the, the medical office building off of Carroll, it's right above the Sligo Creek, right above Sligo Creek where there's the big erosion problems draining down into the, you know, the slope there, like taking out that parking, putting in a, a park there for, you know, like a 10-year period, that'd be another option for small spaces. Yes, we may have to go, you know, beyond this list to get to two and three, but I'm hopeful that we can find at least one of these sites that is viable for something we can do more quickly. Thank you.
If I may, one of the, one of the other things that we've just talked about a little bit in-house and seen some, in some of the other communities are pop-up dog parks, where there's, you put out a portable fence in a location for a day, and, and it's, you have a, a little bit of a festival there, and maybe it's the first Thursday of every month, or it's some other kind of a, a little event, and it can move around too. So, you know, whether or not we ever do that, it might even, you know, it could be something that on one of these sites, you do it one time to see, just, does it work? And so it could be a, it could be a pilot, pilot, or something that, you know, so that is something that we've looked into as a way to get something going relatively quickly.
I've had the pleasure over the years of camping with dogs to visit dog parks in many different parts of the United States, and, and I've seen all kinds that are successful from, you know, from the center of Manhattan in a, in a small, a square, to giant fields and rural areas and everything in between. And so while, that we've, you know, it seems like there's nobody that doesn't want a dog park somewhere in, in Tacoma Park, so that's not really the, the question here. To me, it's, it's sort of like, as Councilmember Ramel was speaking about it, you know, the small compact parks of 4,000 to 5,000 square feet can, can be great in certain circumstances, but it requires different materials and different, because when you have a compact park like that, then the surface gets an awful lot of wear and tear, maybe from small dogs, but nevertheless. So it requires a lo- higher level of maintenance, but it can be really successful from the standpoint of just dogs hanging out with dogs, which is what a lot of them do. We all want to envision that our dogs are gonna be, you know, running and leaping about, but a lot of dogs just, they amble. You know, they spend more time sniffing than exercising, and, and that's fine, that's what dogs do, and that's what we, we want to just to get out of the yard and get them out of the house. On the other hand, being the owner of a greyhound, there isn't a park big enough. When she gets going with other dogs, you know, it's wonderful to observe and just to see these dogs tearing around and chasing each other and, and baying and all that other stuff. And so in that sense, you know, you'd like to have as big a park as possible, and so that's another kind of successful park. And because they're so open and there's so much territory, you know, just plain regular sod is, is the ideal cover, 'cause he's just, it doesn't get that much concentrated urination and, and just wear and tear. So I think there's probably a, a lot of possibilities, and maybe this list will grow a little longer as, as we pursue this, this thing. But one, one of the things I'm just curious about, and that is that, is that we have, when we come up with a park location, that it, it not, that it be a practical topography? I mean, having, having a park on the side of a, a hill with a lot of retaining walls may not be the healthiest place for dogs to, to be let loose, because when dogs get together and they start chasing each other and, not quarreling, but just sort of playing around, they can easily lose their bearings and fall off a retaining wall. I've seen that happen. So we need to be conscious of that as one of the criteria that I'm, I'm not sure I see up here on the decision matrix. One question that I have is if, if we were, just as this hypothetical, were to build the Hefner Park and the one at Prince George's, would it take longer in terms of that time, the time chart to actually do two parks simultaneously in the city? 'Cause I think the presumption has been if we build two, it's gonna take us twice as long to get either one of them open, and maybe that's true, I'm just wondering.
So for, for both those locations, the city owns both of those sites. I, I certainly don't think that it would take twice as long to do two parks, but obviously just in terms of the community input process, some of the community design process that we have for any park, right? I mean, it's not specific to a dog park. It just may take a little bit, it may take a little bit longer to do two parks, and obviously, you know, that depends a lot upon what the designs are for each one of them and the size for each one of them as well.
I think the issue is just money.
Well, you know, I, I read in the paper, there's been a lot of articles about Arlington County and its extravagant bus stop on Columbia Pike, that they spent over a million dollars building a, a bus stop, but they also spent over a million dollars on their dog park. It's incredible, but, so, and, and, you know, our budget seems like peanuts compared to that. And another criteria is to what extent it's possible to build a park in phases because of the sense of urgency we're getting from the community that they wanna get something open, that, that can, you know, at least they get the dogs in there and using it, but it'll still allow it to be further developed over time. Some, some of these situations it might be possible, and others of these locations it might not be possible. Those are just some of the variables that I, I. Those are just some of the variables that I, I think about.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. This is a very useful presentation, including the comparison matrix that you have up here right now. I, as Mr. Edgell noted earlier during public comments, I did have a meeting that he graciously attended yesterday with constituents in Hodges Heights at the site of the Darwin Avenue location, and I previously exchanged email with a number of the Hodges Heights residents who would be affected by that location, and also by the Tacoma Piney Branch local park possibility. And I will say that their reactions related to existing problems, regardless of the dog park. I'll tell you what they are, and I'd actually ask the city manager to look into them, please. One of them was that cars blow through the stop sign at the intersection of Holly, Grant, and Darwin. That intersection, the city actually improved a number of years ago to decrease the size of the intersection. We put in some stormwater treatments and so on. So would you look into that, please, enforcement there? There was concern about off-leash dogs. Off-leash dogs already in the Tacoma Piney Branch local park on Edwil Helm Field. When we were over there yesterday during the Celebrate Tacoma Festival, there was at least one off-leash dog that someone walked down from the Tacoma Park Middle School property. There's a rough path that ends in that parking lot. I don't know if that's something that the city police could currently look into enforcing. Some people are threatened by any off-leash dog, no matter what the dog is, no matter how old it is, and so on. And I hate to see crackdowns, sort of, for their own sake, but still, it's something I'd ask you to consider. So, there was something else. The, that intersection, off-leash dogs.
Drug use.
I'll get to that. Yeah, there, I, I meant the existing concerns that people have that, that could be addressed now. And, and I'll add that, as you know, I had a meeting that Rosgrigsby and Lucine Eyre participated in at Tacoma Park Elementary School a few weeks ago to talk about traffic congestion and parking problems on Holly already. So, I, I don't hear any, there was some opposition, I think maybe three households to the Darwin Avenue site, and one of those households participated in these meetings, and I think that their opposition has turned into, maybe not enthusiasm, but an understanding. And I don't, I don't see that site as really problematical for the vast majority of residents in that area. So that's a good thing. I am very glad that we are going to have the public hearing. Now, what, the thing that bothers me about that site is, I don't think we're being completely...
Which site?
I don't, the Darwin Avenue site, Hefner Park. I think we need to be clearer, we need better clarity on the cost of that site. I think the $70,000 figure is not one that we should be talking about. We talk about phase one, what's necessary to get the park open. I'm much more interested in the total cost of developing that site. From the 2010 materials, Mr. Edgell had put together an estimate that said that that would cost $98,000 for the fences, ground preparation, and so on, and that the Tacoma Dogs would donate 10,000 of that. But then, the potential regrading of that site, if we did build a larger park there, maybe not the 4,000 square foot, but the 10,000 square foot, if I remember that number right, there'd be regrading and retaining walls, and I would guess those, that would cost $40,000. I don't know, I'm not an engineer. I think that would be necessary, given the slope of the site, both to make it more usable for dogs and because of erosion, water running down the hillside and all of that. So I, I would really like there to be clarity about the cost of that site. I would have no problem having a budget amendment in FY15 to add to the $70,000, if we can get that site, if we do go forward with that site, to get it done more quickly. Just one technical point, though. My understanding is that if there were retaining walls in that site, that they, the fences would be interior to the retaining walls. In other words, the retaining walls would not be interior to the dog parks, so you wouldn't have any dogs jumping off the retaining walls. Yeah, so...
I don't know enough about it to...
I think Mr. Edgell has worked with Eric Saul, the architect who's donating his time, so, so that safety concern perhaps would not be there. So, once again, clarity on the cost, because, I'll note that for, none of these sites are we talking about things like water. The presumption is people will bring water, but I can see that a year and a half from now, we'll be up, people lining up at the podium saying, install water at the site. And put in lighting.
That's true.
In particular, the Hefner Park site, as you all have observed, is not real close to any residences. I know what the third thing was. It's not real close to any residences, so people will say, put in some lighting so that we can use this thing into the evening. The third thing was something that I've been hearing about for years, which is people hanging out in Tacoma Piney Branch Local Park. It has moved down into the skate park area, smoking dope into the evening. Again, I'm not in favor of throwing kids into the criminal justice system, but it is complaint that we're getting already, and if that could be handled in a sensitive manner, without, again, throwing kids into the criminal justice system, then that would be a good thing. But sometimes when you do enforcement there, then you just move the problem from one place to another. So, that's, that's really all I have to say. I, I do also like the Prince George's Avenue location, and I would support multiple sites, and those seem like the two most likely to me, the Hefner Park site, the Prince George's Triangle site. I have nothing to say about one before the other, or, I, I think I would be reluctant to see the city do both of them at the same time, because it would be good to gain some experience there. But, yeah, that's all I have to say, which was enough.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I'll just reiterate what really has been said before about needing this to happen in a timely manner moving forward. I think, looking at this list, as Councilmember Grimes just said, the two likely candidates that rise to the top for me include Prince George's Avenue and the Hefner Park. I just note that regarding one of your last points, Councilmember Grimes, when we were at the Tacoma Dogs barbecue, someone noted that actually putting the dog park there might discourage some of the use of...
Yeah, if you don't mind, Mr. Edgell, I believe, had said that, you spoke to the principal at the middle school, and, and kids were hanging out in the woods there, and having people using that site might discourage that.
Might actually, right, discourage some of that behavior, so, all right. I would just like to say, on Spring Park, the city manager noted at Forest Park, people use that, the playground. I would say, Spring Park, that field gets used an enormous amount of time. For not only Tacoma rec soccer holds practices there, but there are a number of adult soccer games that take place on the weekends. That field is used pretty much nonstop on the weekends, and during soccer season, during rec soccer season, in the evenings, so.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo my colleagues, thank you for the presentation, but my question regarding Hefner Park, I attended the barbecue that Tacoma Dogs hosted last week, and I saw a survey stick. I was told that part of the land was Montgomery County. Is an easement required for us to use our portion of the land?
The Darwin Avenue is in the area owned by Park and Planning, the Darwin Avenue parking lot, and so there's a little bit, my understanding is there's a little bit of land between that and ours.
Right.
I don't think it's much, five feet or 10 feet, something like that. So we would have to make some kind of an arrangement.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I would also like to see the, I mean, personally, I'd love to see the Sligo Maple location turned into a park. I mean, a resident told me that would be a wonderful place for a dog park, but I do understand the limitations that the county has. I just think that would work for those people that live on Maple Avenue that own dogs, those people that live on Erie and Kinnabek that own pets, that could just walk down there. And I've been told that people are already using it as a dog park. So, I mean, it would be nice if we could add that to a seriously potential site. But one question that comes to mind is aggressive dogs. How are aggressive dogs handled in this potential dog park?
Help, just define for me an aggressive dog.
A dog that wants to attack other dogs, have a week.
Almost all dog parks have rules, and it'll have a sign that say, you know, if it acts in an aggressive way, it needs to be removed. That's, I think it's kind of a reporting thing by the other users of the, of the park. And depending on how you manage the park, you may have members or other kind of authorization to use, so there may be a dog that loses his membership.
And have, have you thought about some type of advertisement, local advertisements around the fence of the dog park? I mean, I would think that would be very interesting for reducing the maintenance costs.
Yeah, I think we are, we are still very much in the contemplative part of this, and so absolutely anything is still on the, still on the table.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'll just make a couple of comments. I think a lot of it has been covered. I think the, this, this matrix in particular, that's up here on the screen now, makes it seem that the Hefner Park site is the most obvious site to consider. I think the Prince George's Avenue site has some advantages, and I could see, considering a process where we kind of take, take one, one potential site before the other, but anticipate that we'll have multiples. I like the idea of the potential for some pop-up dog parks. I don't know what the viability is for doing those to even potentially including, like, during the winter, sometimes the city closes off a street for sledding. Maybe the potential for some kind of pop-up on the, on the street where the city closes the street at a certain time, and a pop-up goes up that includes the street. And to Councilmember Grimes' concern about the, about a potential request for lighting, I just had the concern when he was talking about that, that, I think I'm right, that in a number of cases, Park and Planning posts hours for their parks as being daylight hours. I know the city does that for a number of our parks as well, so that the potential for introduction of lighting for a dog park might open up the potential for having to deal with, in the Hefner Park case, getting, kind of using the parking lot of Park and Planning for a lighted park at Hefner, it might kind of get into those jurisdictional issues and definitions of how parks get used, particularly at night. Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure that this, at least from my, from the perspective that I can give it, the staff know in terms of preparing for the next step in this process, and have enough clarity. To me, I think, given the level of interest we've had from the public in this issue in the past, giving the public some clear choices to react to is a really good thing, and so on what the mayor was just talking about with regard to the pop-up parks, you know, I mean, literally one piece of the thing that the, giving, again, giving the public something to react to, one, one part of that could be, you know, option A, or, or just, you know, and not that each option is exclusive of the others, but option A could be the city spends $10,000 on a gate and fence posts and mobile fence material, and can literally install a park in one locate, one of the potential locations for a month or for two months, and move it to another location, and move it to another location. You know, so it has to be there for long enough, because I'm, at least from my limited experience putting up fencing, you can't move it that often, and it's really bulky, and storage is a problem, but you could do something like that, and it would be, you know, you could spend relatively little money. I, I think a second one, for me, option B, is the, you know, more of the pilot phase, but I would really emphasize on that one, the fencing, really cheap fencing. So, you know, you can go to Ace Hardware, you can buy fence posts, you can buy fencing that will not let dogs through for relatively little money, and that, that, you know, material may not be the material that's, it may not be the wrought iron gate that's going to last you 15 years, but it is a functional dog park. Fences like that last for five years, 10 years. You know, that's a pretty good lifespan of what would be a pretty small investment without the, you know, all the structure. And then, to me, the, you know, sort of options C and D are, you know, more alike, you know, imagine we're going to spend this much money on this facility, and I think you need to have some, some, we need to give some people some way to react to the square footage. So, you know, if it's 2,000, or 4,000, or 8,000, you know, what does that, what does that mean? You know, this is, this is where we're headed? Anyway, I just, to me, that, that's my long-winded way of saying, if we really lay out some clear choices, then we'll get feedback from residents, and we bring in them into the process of dealing with these trade-offs. So it's not staff, it's not the council being the only ones that have to deal with the trade-offs. We get residents to say, okay, well, of the options you've given us, this is the one we would do, and we can use that to help, you know, move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes.
I have a question. Would the geotechnical analysis be done by one of the engineering firms that the city already has on contract?
I don't know.
We asked that question, and I, I'm sorry, I don't remember the answer, we'll have to find out.
Okay. I, I would encourage you to move ahead with planning for that geotechnical analysis now, and then maybe not actually commit to doing it until after the public hearing, but I don't anticipate any problems there. But I think that's something that you already said that could potentially be done this fiscal year, so I would encourage you to move ahead with planning and not let that be an impediment.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a note on something that Councilmember Mail said about the, the gate, the fencing, which is, given the, the different locations, the only one that would give me pause on getting some cheap fencing is the Prince George's Avenue, because I believe people will see that from their front porches, if I'm, so I just want to be cautious. I think the Hefner Park and some of these other places are, people are not looking out from their, front of their houses, but on the Prince George's Triangle, that is fairly close to people's residence, so I want to be careful as we think about planning that, that aesthetically, we're not causing an eyesore for the people who live there.
Other comments or questions?
Just one more comment. Councilmember Smith brought up the issue of rules before, and that's similar to what Councilmember Grimes just said. We could start putting out samples of, you know, the rules that a dog park would operate on, under, and make sure that's not an impediment to opening a park later on in the process. And that's probably a pretty simple thing, if finding a couple of examples, as Councilmember Schultz identified, you know, from the Million Dollar Parks rules to the new Silver Spring Dog Parks rules.
I would want to see one explicit rule be that the dog must be licensed according to Montgomery County law, and that actually, given, it would be good to know that Tacoma Park doesn't have to have an MOU and an opt-in to Montgomery County licensing law, so maybe you could check on that with the city attorney, but, but that is a rule because that ensures that the dog has been...
Been shots.
Shots, bait, neuter, chips, I don't know what, but, and there could be a liability.
You're not saying that they just have to be licensed by Montgomery County, but, but licensed by one, by one of the jurisdictions around here, because I imagine Prince George's County has a similar...
Oh, yeah, you're right, yes.
Just a question on the, does any, is anybody else aware of other dog park? Has anybody else seen that as a rule at another dog park?
They're shaking their heads, yes.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
And I would, and I would imagine for, for rules, it's even, it could be as simple as getting pictures of the, of the rule boards from a couple of...
Yeah, I think we've got quite a few.
Okay. Because I could volunteer to take the one at the Green Belt Park, because I'm near it all the time. So, it sounds like we had some interest in a number of areas for potential presentation of information for the public hearing. Does staff feel like you've got enough to go on for what you want to put out for the public hearing, or do you want us to kind of run through a list of three, four, five items to make sure that gets included?
Yeah, I mean, I think we've got some, I mean, I think I, I heard certainly what Councilmember Mail said about providing some options. I think that that is something that will be good to have people react to. And it sounds like, it sounds like there certainly is at least some interest in at least two, if not three, potential parks. Sligo Maple, Prince George's Avenue, and Hefner specifically. There is some hesitancy with Spring and Forest from some of the other compatible uses, and Piney Branch is just going to be a difficult park for us to, to develop on, just given Park and Planning's sort of current stance on it. sort of current stance on it.
And, and my sense is Sligo Maple falls in that category too, which Councilmember Smith recognizes. He's just being wistful about.
That's right. Exactly.
Good.
Doesn't hurt to dream.
Just to point out, I know some of the issues with Tacoma Piney Branch have been about the trees, the, the trees. The, at the weekend festival, the county had parked a truck under one of those trees.
Oh, I, I think that the county's argument about those trees and the aesthetics is baloney.
Well, I would second that motion, that it's largely baloney, what I read here. I just, it's a lot of jargon, unconstrained buffers and stuff like that. I've already said this, is that people walk their dogs, scores the hundreds of dogs on that hiker-biker trail. And they were, they're doing what dogs do and that doesn't seem to be a creative problem for anybody.
We have street trees that are right next to roads where buses that, and trucks that weigh how many thousands of pounds drive right by them and compress the roots and they thrive.
Sorry, can I just ask one more question? Do you, do you have to have a fence? I mean, obviously it takes a different kind of dog to have a park with no fence. But if you had a no enforcement zone for leash laws, you know, what is that? What is the, is it a liability risk?
It's a liability risk. I mean, that was why it was turned down before.
That's, that's where we went in whatever year we talked about this before. And the liability issues just kind of kicked it out.
Plus you get lost dogs.
Find your speed.
That may be a good thing.
I mean, you get them, they, they just keep running. They, they don't, you know, they don't know it's, you know.
So we've, we've got some potential locations to put out there, some potential criteria to put out there. And we'll have a public hearing in two weeks.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. That concludes that item. That concludes our meeting. We're adjourned.